Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Boynton Beach City Commission Workshop Meeting. More specifically, this is the Park Impact Fee Meeting number two. Today is Tuesday, June 6, 2023, and the time is now 5:35 PM. This is a workshop, which means no formal voting will occur. We will not be making any final decisions. This is a time for us to hear information, deliberate on that information, and at most give general consensus, a direction. We're going to begin first with our roll call, and then we'll proceed to informational items. City Clerk?
Mayor Penzerga.
Here.
Vice Mayor Turkin.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Hay.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Mayor, you have a form.
All right. Thank you. Informational items by members of the City Commission. Would all of you like to just make this at the second meeting for today, or you want to do it now? Let's do the second meeting today, so we'll jump right into the presentation. Again, this is the Parks and Rec Facilities Impact Fee Public Workshop and Extraordinary Circumstance Meeting, and we will have a presentation. I see Ms. Radigan's already at the podium. Ms. Radigan, if you could give us an overview. Again, this is meeting number two.
Yes, good evening. Amanda Radigan, Planning and Zoning Director. I will have Sean Akasuo come up, and he will be giving the same presentation that he gave last time. As a reminder, this is the extraordinary circumstance meeting number two. We're going through this process in order, an added process in order to adopt impact fees that are above the statutory requirement. So because of that, we will need to hold two workshops. This being the second of the two. As a brief overview, this request did come out of last year's budget meetings, and the final report is out. And with that, I'll pass it over to Sean. Once Sean finishes his presentation, I will be back up to talk through some implementation options.
All right. Good evening, Sean, and welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. Good to see everyone again. So I'm going to take us through the same presentation as last time, just as Amanda mentioned, on the Parks and Recreation Impact Fee Analysis. So we'll jump right in. You know, we're going to be talking, give a little bit of background on the study, some legal considerations, impact fee criteria. We're going to talk about the method used to calculate the fees, some of the basic and major assumptions encompassed in that, and then talk about recommendations and, as Amanda mentioned, implementation options. Next slide, please. So in terms of background, you know, the current impact fees have been in place, I believe, since 2013. The current fee for single family is $875 per residential dwelling unit. One thing that's important to note about that fee is it's currently designed with a built-in 64% discount as a part of that method. So if you were to think of the fee in its entirety without that discount, it'd be closer to around $2,400. So right now, the fee that's being charged is pretty substantially discounted. So as a part of what we're doing, I wanted to cover a little bit of background. I know we covered it last week, but in terms of, you know, what are impact fees? Who pays them, and what are they used for? So impact fees are fees that are billed to new development, and they're paid by the developers that are creating an increased need for capital facilities in the city. In this case, with respect to Parks and Recreation assets. So they're the ones who are paying it. This fee is not applied to non-residential properties, so you're not going to have businesses or restaurants pay. This is just to residential development. In terms of what these fees are used for, you can't use them for any sort of operating costs or any sorts of R&amp;R projects. These are exclusively used for expansion-related capital facilities and growth and new assets. So it's all associated with growth. You can't use it to rehabilitate. You can't use it to meet any deficiencies in current level of service. It's just specifically for growth. Oh, thanks. So some of the legal considerations. One thing I would mention that was on the prior slide is one thing that's important about this process is you want to make sure, to the extent you can, that the fees are right-sized for your community, that they encompass all of the current capital investment and the proposed capital investment that's associated with growth to make sure that growth is paying for its fair share of those costs as the community grows. You know, to the extent that growth is coming in and placing a demand for municipal services, you want to make sure that that growth is paying for its share. And so to the extent that the fees are right-sized, that allows you to mitigate the burden on existing residents. So to the extent that you do offer a discount or a reduction in the fee compared to what is calculated, that differential would be then recovered by your existing residents. So next slide, please. So for legal considerations, impact fees, you know, they have some background in Florida case law and in the Florida statutes. The statutes, it's called the Florida Impact Fee Act. It's had a number of updates and revisions since the early 2000s, with the most recent revision taking place in 2021. Next slide, please. So some of the items that are covered in the Florida Impact Fee Act are with respect to the requirements for the fee calculations themselves, so that the fees have to be based on, you know, the most recent localized costs. So it has to be your asset data, your population data. It has to be tied to your community. Then also, there are certain other accounting requirements that the fees have to be accounted for separately in their own fund. If there's any administrative charges, they have to be set at actual cost. To the extent a new fee is adopted, you have to provide 90-day grace period to allow the building community to adjust their pricing structure. And there's some other administrative-type items. There's an affidavit that has to be signed, and these things can't be charged before the issuance of a building permit. Next slide. So in addition to those basic legal considerations, there are some changes that I mentioned a moment ago in 2021, and those are with respect to the fee levels and fee implementation. And what the Florida, what they did to the statute was they added some provisions to it that say, if you're going to have increases of certain levels, then those increases have to be spread over a certain window of time. And so if there's an increase between 0 and 25%, then the fees have to be increased over a two-year period evenly. If it's between 25% increase and a 50% increase, then it has to be phased in over a four-year period of time evenly, at 12.5% a year there. And the fees would be capped at a level of no increase higher than 50% compared to the existing fee. However, they'd also, as a part of that statute, added a provision for what's called extraordinary circumstances. And again, that's what we're kind of here to talk about today. And those circumstances allow for local governments to set forth a procedural process to have two meetings with respect to the consideration of those circumstances. And that allows you to sidestep the phasing provisions of the statute as well as the increase cap. So you're allowed to do an increase higher than 50%, and you can potentially do it all at once if that's something that you decide to do. One of the other things they also added was you can't increase impact fees more than once every four years. Next slide. So in terms of some of the basic criteria, there's something called the dual rational nexus. Essentially, what that relates to is that the fees have to be based on growth-related capital costs. And then the second prong to that is that the fees then have to be used to pay for growth-related capital. So that's your link between the items when the fee is calculated. They have to be based on, you know, reasonable levels of service, and you can't use them, like I mentioned before, you can't use them to fund operations. You can't use them to fund R&amp;R. It's exclusively for growth-related purposes. Next slide.
If I can ask?
Sure, yeah.
What's R&amp;R for the public?
Sorry, renewal and replacement or renewal and rehabilitation. So it's the rehabbing of existing assets. So you can't use it for that. It can only be for the expansion of assets. Thank you. In terms of the methodology, essentially, we do a detailed population forecast and a dwelling unit forecast. That becomes our denominator in the calculation. We look at your occupancy factors, because since you have different classes of residential service, the fees are applied differently based on those factors. We look at your existing and proposed levels of service. You know, there was the recently completed Parks and Recreation Master Plan, where there were some tweaks and updates made to that level of service. We then look at the existing investment, future capital investment, to come up with what are the appropriate costs that should be included as a part of this fee, divided out by the units, and essentially, it's a fee that's calculated per residential dwelling unit. And then, in the case of the city, it's bifurcated by single-family versus multifamily with two different types within that. Next slide, please. So for the first step, the population and dwelling unit forecast, we looked at a number of different sources historically, you know, the Census Bureau and some other items. We also were provided with some more up-to-date population growth and unit growth data from your planning department that was provided by the county. And as a part of those figures, you'll see we grew the population from its current level at about 89,000, or closer to 90,000 there in terms of total population, to about 105,000 by 2050. That's a growth in totality of about 17% between now and then. What's our estimate of build-out, or about 0.6% per year on average? But it's about almost a fifth by the end. So those are the units that we'll be dividing all those costs by. Next slide, please. So in terms of the occupancy factors, you know, your current rate structure has a fee per single-family attached and detached unit. And then for multifamily, it has a fee based on if it's two to four units, or if it's five and above. So we made sure to look at the occupancy factors for those specific types. We look back to census data to get those factors, and we've updated them accordingly. You'll see that the current factors for a single-family are 2.66. Multifamily two to four is 2.06, with multifamily at above, excuse me, above five units at 1.81, looking at the revised data, because those factors were direct about 10, 11 years ago. We have pretty close on single-family at 2.63. The others have gone up slightly at 2.36 for two to four units, and 1.97 for multifamily units above five units. So we've updated the population forecast as well as the occupancy factors there. Next slide. So in terms of level of service, your current level of service is two and a half acres per thousand of population. There are some other advisory levels of service with respect to facilities, courts, and things like that, but in general, sized around the land requirement at two and a half acres. Currently, you have about 30 parks in the city that are, just cover about 320 total acres. When we look at that 320 acres compared to your current population, you're currently providing a level of service of about 3.9 acres per thousand. So that's well above the two and a half that you have in your comp plan as your adopted standard. And that includes, you know, various facilities, you know, basketball courts, tennis courts, pickleball, football fields, trails, and so on. So there's a number of different amenities and facilities that are included as a part of those 30 parks. Next slide. So the city, like I mentioned a moment ago, recently completed its Parks and Recreation Master Plan. As a part of that analysis, you looked and evaluated your current facilities. There was some population forecast that was done as a part of that analysis. There was a visioning phase that involved looking at the community and what future facilities did you all think are appropriate that you want to have as you grow and move forward in time. And one of the changes that came as a result of that analysis was a recommended level of service increase from two and a half acres per thousand going up to six. So all of the capital projects that were a part of the visioning phase of that master plan were designed to get the community from two and a half to that sixth level. But, you know, that takes some time. And so being that, you know, we want to be conservative in how we design this on a forward-looking basis, we've assumed for the purposes of the fee calculation right now that there'd be a smaller incremental increase in the level of service going from three point, excuse me, from two and a half to four, being that you're right at the cusp at 3.9. So with that, we're designing the fees based on the level of service of four, but the idea being over time, you know, as you update the fee calculation, as the community grows and your assessment of, you know, availability of land and need evolve, you can then true that up, you know, every so many years accordingly. One thing I'll note is that, you know, as I mentioned before, the impact fee can't be used to recover any service level deficiency. Sorry. Had throat surgery a number of years ago, and ever since then, the voice skips out. So any incremental increase associated with the capacity going from 3.9 to four, that point one is not included as a part of the analysis. So that's excluded, those costs are excluded. So we're not including any service deficiency in the fee to make sure we're in compliance with the statute. Thank you. Okay, we're on the next slide. Awesome. So in terms of the capital costs that we looked at that are a part of the fee calculation, we look at your existing investment in Parks and Recreation assets. We went through and categorized them and functionalized them to see what assets are appropriate to include and which ones we can't include. Part of the requirements are that you can only use, the fees can only be designed on capital facilities, so you can't include like small equipment, like vehicles or lawn mowers, you know, little things like that. It has to be capital assets of a useful life of five years or more. So we made sure to exclude those items. We then also looked historically at what assets have been funded through grants, because we can't include anything that's cost-free capital as a part of the fee. So we've made an allowance for the historical grants. That's about $1.2 million. So when we look at your total investment of $42.2 million and back out those items, we have a net investment in the fee of about $41.8. In terms of, that's the existing investment. When we look forward, we looked at the long-term capital plan. That was a composite of your near-term CIP, and then the visioning portion of the master plan, and we stitched those together for the horizon of near-term to long-term capital investment. That included capital facilities of just under $74 million for that window of time. We then also looked at the potential for grants over that window of time and what we think is reasonable based on discussions with planning staff. And think about, you know, just under $12 million of assumed grant funding is incorporated into the fee calculation. So the net amount of investment after grants for forward-looking capital is about $62 million. Next slide, please. So when we bring all those parts together that we were just talking about, there's the existing investment, the $40 million and change, the planned future investment net of grants of about $62 million. We have a total investment, both existing and planned over a long-term period, of just under $103 million. When we divide that out by build-out population, we get a cost per person. And then we take that cost per person and scale it based on those occupancy factors we talked about a moment ago to get the fee per unit for the various service types. So you'll see there, the fee for a single-family proposed would be $2,560. For a multifamily, two to four units, it would be $2,299. And then for multifamily unit developments of over five units, it'd be $1,914 per dwelling unit. Next slide. So the fees here, showing your existing fees for the various types, $875 for single-family and the respective fees for multifamily, two to four units, and multifamily five and above. We have the maximum supportable fees that we just talked about on the prior slide with showing what the increase is. So and then on the far right of that table, you'll see the capped statute amount of 50%. So if you weren't going the extraordinary circumstance route like we are, you would have been capped at, you know, $1,300 from the $875 as opposed to the $2,560. So, you know, if you all were to go that route, which I know that's not the consensus we received, all that differential in the fees that would have been collected would fall to existing residents. So just wanted to make note of that there. In terms of the extraordinary circumstances that we have, you know, there's the significant capital investment that's going to be made between now and going forward, you know, associated with increasing the level of service and maintaining it as growth comes on and drives those costs. Part of that is also the construction cost inflation that we've been experiencing. You know, all of our clients have been experiencing it on their capital plans. It's just had a very large impact. So we want to make sure that, you know, we can keep pace with that. The projected growth in the community, we're talking about between now and build-out, growth of an additional about 17%, so, you know, almost a one-fifth growth in the community over that window of time. And then also, what I had mentioned earlier, is the existing fee method. Again, you know, it's heavily discounted. It's at a fee level of $875, but again, that's only, you know, 36% of the fee. So those all items coupled together, we feel are, you know, the circumstances that would indicate that, you know, moving to the full fee amount level. Also, the fee level last time was updated in 2013. So it's been a little while since this has been looked at. So on this slide here, this is just a comparison of some neighboring municipalities and some other locations, and their Parks and Recreation fee specifically for single-family dwelling units. You'll see that the average comes in there at about $2,700. Your existing fee is well below that. And then even at the fully implemented and fully recommended level, you would still be right on par with that average, a little below. And then one of the other things, and I think you have as a handout, is we were asked to put together a comparison for multifamily to see how that scaled as well. So there should be a handout in front of you that has that comparison with the comparables shown in a light blue and in a pinkish color. So with that one, you'll see that it's very similarly structured, with the existing fees being pretty much on the far-left side of the comparison with, you know, the fee for five units and above at $595, and the fee for two to four units at $678, and those increasing accordingly to $1,914 and $2,299 respectively. Again, it's kind of the same scale. You're on the very low end right now. You'd be at about the average. So they do move similarly, and it kind of makes sense because the fee is scaled on a cost per person and then just adjusted for those occupancy factors. So they're going to move very similarly to single-family. Next slide, please. So in terms of, you know, recommendations, I know this, you know, workshop meeting, just looking, you know, for consensus and everything, it would be our recommendation to go forward and move at the adopted, or excuse me, move to adopt the full fee level. But one of the things we wanted to talk about also, that Amanda had mentioned a moment ago, was some implementation options, whether it's the full fee or some form of phasing program to phase up into that. You know, just a couple of other items. You know, you want to make sure you look at these periodically, you know, probably every four years. That's what the statute allows you to do. You can't do anything faster than that, and you probably don't want to get behind the eight ball in terms of waiting too long to update these again, because your capital costs are going to change. Growth in the community is going to change, you know, your needs, assessment, all of that could change. So you want to try to keep this at pace with that. And with that, I'll handoff.
Thank you, Amanda Radigan, Planning and Zoning Director. In front of you, you should have another handout that looks like this. There are also copies in the back for the public. This outlines three different implementation options. The first option is the full fee over one year. So this is the quickest of the three. And it is, it does realize the full maximum supportable fees. That's option one. Option two is the full fee phased over a two-year plan. So it will realize the full fee at the end of two years, but it's broken up into two phases. The first phase would realize 75% of the fee. And then the second year, we would realize the 100%. So it's broken up into 75 and then an additional 25. And then on the back is the third option, which is only realizing 75% of the maximum, which would maintain a 25% discount. And then myself and Sean are here if you have any questions.
All right. Thank you again for that presentation, Sean, Amanda. I want to turn to my colleagues to get some input on their position. We really have two sets of question here, which is, do we go to the full amount or do we go at a discounted amount? And the second being, how shall we implement this? Should we go for the full amount all in one year, over two years, or is there a discount? So those are the two sets of questions. Let's go around the days. Let's begin on my right. Let's go with Commissioner Cruz.
During the agenda review, it seemed like the best solution would probably be to do the full fee with the 75% to begin with, and then the remaining 25%. And that's what staff's recommending.
Staff can support any of the three options. This is ultimately a policy decision. In my opinion, realizing the full fee but still being mindful of developers and giving the market time to adjust is useful. That option also creates a temporary 25% discount to developers, which is also an incentive for people who are in the pipe, almost ready to develop. There is a discount there, too. So, so yes, again, all three, I think, are supported by staff. I do see some extra perks on that option.
And then, if that were to happen, when would this be effective?
So I think by law, we have to give a 30-day effective notice from the second reading. So as soon as, 30 or 90?
90.
90, sorry, 90. I heard it wrong. We would have to give at least three months, 90 days from the effective date. That would be the soonest we could implement it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I'm comfortable with staff's recommendation at this time. And thank you for coming back and bringing the data on the multifamily and for your presentation.
Thank you. Just for clarity's sake, which of these options were you comfortable with?
The maximum fee.
All at one time or over the two years?
Over the two years.
Over the two years. All right. Commissioner Hay.
Maximum fee over a period of time, I agree with the staff. So that's it.
Commissioner Kelly.
I can support that as well. And thank you. I was glad to see the multifamily units and that we are, it's good to see this and to see where we need to be in relationship to other cities. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Amanda, this is a question for you. It's just for my own clarity. Let's say, I'm just, and I'm wanting to know how this would work. There's an established single-family home that gets destroyed in a fire, or it's an existing home, the resident has lived there, the home gets destroyed. Are they then, do they then become?
Need to pay this fee.
Correct. When they're applying for new permits for a new building, even though it's been an existing home?
Thank you. That's actually a really good question and not discussed within this meeting, but will probably be discussed within our first and second reading, because we are talking about some of those topics within the ordinance rewrite. I believe the way it's drafted right now, there will be credits available. So if it was paid in the past, meaning if it's a single-family home established, it paid it once, it wouldn't have to repay this fee to rebuild their home. I'll turn to legal and make sure that is correct.
You're testing my recollection on the draft ordinance, but I believe that's the concept that was in there.
And we can take another look at it before you see it for a first reading to ensure that. But I think the intention definitely is to have credits built in. So whenever anything is redeveloped, that they are maintaining credit for what was there and then paying the proportionate share after that. So if a unit, one unit to one unit wouldn't make a difference. Actually, in this case, it wouldn't make a difference in any case. Other, other situation, other fees would change, but this one wouldn't. You would get credit for whatever you are building.
So, okay, so let's off the single-family, and we can keep talking about this later once we're talking about the ordinance, but let's say we're talking about a building that has multi-units, and they paid the small park impact. Do they only get a credit for what they previously paid? And they would have to pay up to what our current park impact fee is? Or is it, or does, or do they get credit across the board?
I believe the way it's drafted right now, they would get credit per the dollar value that they had paid previously. An alternative would be to give credit per unit. So if you were demoing three units and building 10 units, you would pay for seven units. I think the way it's drafted now, it's a dollar value.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly, and thank you, everybody. In terms of my position, I differ slightly. I would have been in favor of moving forward with the full amount all in this year. However, that's okay. It is a slight difference, but I see where the majority stands, which is excellent. Amanda, do you require any other direction?
I do not. We can expect to have the first reading of the ordinance at the next meeting, and the second reading will follow that. If you guys have any questions for me, I'm available.
All right. Well, thank you. Any other remaining questions for staff or the consultant? If there's nothing else, we'll proceed now to public audience. Thank you so much to both of you.
Thank you.
All right. So we're now moving on to public audience. As always, each person has three minutes. If you'd like to speak specifically on this, which is the Parks and Rec Facilities Impact Fee, now would be the time to approach the podium. Same rules apply as always, and after we conclude with those in the chambers, we'll proceed to those online. Let me set the timer right.
Susan Oyer, Boynton Beach. Question, how is this applied to historic homes that were built before the first fees were started? For example, what if you have hurricane damage to, I don't know, my house is 60 years old. It's before, and I live in a neighborhood of 450 houses, and my neighborhood was built before these fees. So would I have to pay these fees because they weren't paid 60-some-odd years ago when my house was built? And that's Forest Park and Seacrest Estates and Chapel Hill. These are now your high-value homes. My house went from being, you know, one of the cheap houses in Boynton Beach to, you know, they're $600,000, $700,000, $800,000 in my neighborhood now. So, yeah, yeah, that's where your bread and butter is coming in for your taxes, is, you know, Forest Park. is, you know, Forest Park and the south end of town. It's not just Inca anymore. So would we have to pay this?
So we don't usually have questions during this time?
No, you don't have to answer it now, but you know.
We'll get you that answer for sure.
Yeah, because I mean, fires happen. Look at the garbage truck that went through my neighborhood that snapped a power cord and set, you know, a house on fire and stuff in my neighborhood. There were all the bimsing in the back into the house. And yeah, that was fun that day for that poor person a block away from me. But what if that happens? And that obviously is not going to be the last time, judging by the fire and the garbage truck out in my front yard. The firemen are out there putting out, you know, six months ago. So stuff happens. What if it's a hurricane? What if it is a fire? What if it's not your fault? I mean, yes, it could be your fault. You know, is there a difference for something like that? And, and you know, you get mad at your ex-wife and burn down the house versus an act of God. You know, do you look at something like that? So I'm just putting that out there for you. And I'm, I'm all for improving our parks, especially the Sarah Sims where our trees are missing. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments speakers specifically on the impact fee? Seeing no one else in the chambers, we're going to go to those online. Mani, who do we have online, if any?
Mr. May, we have no hands raised.
All right. Hearing that, public comments on this are now closed. Are there any additional comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, may I have a motion? Go ahead, Commissioner.
I understand that we have 30 parks. When I counted them, I didn't get that many. So could I get a list from staff on the parks that we have? Is 30 the right number? Does anybody know?
Commissioner Hay, I believe we have 32 parks and we can get you a list.
32, okay. Appreciate it.
Yeah, we have Frank Ilazo, Assistant Director of Recreation and Parks. So we have 32 recognized parks and then we have inventory like land that we own. So our department will get you guys that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Good catch, Commissioner. Thank you. And if there's nothing else, may I have a motion to adjourn this workshop?
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it, motion passes, this workshop is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Now, we do have a city commission meeting scheduled and we've already passed six. If it's all right with my colleagues, I'd like to just continue on to the city commission meeting. I see multiple head nods.
Yes.
All right. So IT, the broadcast is continuous, if I'm not mistaken. And I just want to welcome everybody again to the city commission meeting. Today is Tuesday, June 6, 2023. The time is now 6:08 PM. As with all of our city commission meetings, the rules of civility and decorum apply. Officials must first be addressed by the chair and not interrupt a speaker. Public comments from the audience must be addressed to the commission as a whole and not to any individual here on the dais or in the audience. Any acts of personal attacks, insults, rudeness, all of those are strictly prohibited. Disrupted behaviors from the audience are also strictly prohibited. So please govern yourselves accordingly. We are going to move on now to roll call. City Clerk, let's begin with the roll call.
Mayor Panzerga.
Here.
Vice Mayor Turkin.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Hay.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Mayor, you have a form.
Thank you, City Clerk. We're going to move on now to our invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Our invocation, I'm informed, will be led by Pastor Amanda Martel from Journey Church. Good evening and welcome. Our pledge of allegiance immediately thereafter will be led by Commissioner Hay. If we could all stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight with a grateful heart. You chose the city of Boynton Beach as a place where we can each live, grow, and serve. We thank you for our elected officials, our judges, attorneys, first responders, the businesses, the churches, the families, the students, and the kiddos that make the city of Boynton Beach one of the best places to live in the state of Florida. Gracious God, we invite you to preside over this meeting. Guide us with the spirit of unity to work together in transforming our community to be a place of meaning and excellence for all. Lord, you know that meetings just like this are the reason our city remains strong. So we welcome your presence. Lord God, these are the people you have chosen to lead. And I pray right now that the spirit of refreshment falls upon them to encourage them as leaders. I think you just want to tell each of them right now that you're proud of them. But there's more work to do. Jesus, you've got big plans for this city and we ask right now for your blessing on the men and women who have been called to lead this beautiful tropical community in which we get to live, work, play, and call home. So God, we lift up the over 80,000 residents that will be impacted by decisions made tonight. Would you guide the residents sitting in this room of the city of Boynton Beach to love this city as much as we do? And help the leaders of our community to lead with compassion, honor, and wisdom as we move into the future. The best years are ahead of us and we are excited for how you will use this city to bring hope and love to all. We really are better together. God bless America and God bless the city of Boynton Beach. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Martel and Commissioner Hay. We're now going to move on to agenda approval, additions, deletions, and corrections. For myself, a staff has informed me there's been a change to item 6G. If we could all look at 6G, I was informed that they are removing the Bill Toma Foundation for Kids and Families off of that list. It may be returning, I'm not sure, but that is going to be an internal decision at the police department. All right. All right, let's go around the dais. If you have any additions, deletions, corrections, let's go to Commissioner Kelly on my left.
Mayor, I do not have any additions. Oh, actually, she's here. I didn't see her. Catherine, and you're standing behind me, but I wanted to know where we were on future agenda item D and on the advisory board ordinance, so we can set a date for that.
I might be better suited to answer that.
Yes.
It's with me for review. I have done a comprehensive, like, but I haven't had a chance to send it to Ms. Matas yet. I hope to send it to her either tomorrow or the next day.
Okay.
So, and then for us to discuss it. So it's been with me for a little bit of time.
Okay. When do you?
I think, I'll get it to you tomorrow. I would say maybe July. One of the meetings in July would be realistic call.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. All right. Answered that, Matt, Catherine.
Commissioner, was that it?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you. We're now moving on to Commissioner Hay. Additions, deletions, corrections.
I would like to pull, if you will, item 6I.
6I?
6I.
All right. We will certainly address 6I when we get to consent.
Okay.
Was there anything else?
The other thing I would like to say that I did attend Flag Day celebration for the Haitian population.
Commissioner, would you mind if we finish with the amendments first and then we'll do the informational items?
Okay.
All right. Sounds good.
I would like to amend and have the future agenda item. The one about the cemetery.
13C?
13C. I would like to begin that discussion at our next meeting because it's, I'm getting several calls. So we need to move that up and start that discussion on where do we go from here?
I am certainly open to having that discussion at the next meeting. My only question, Commissioner, would be, does that require staff research? And if it does, are they ready for that? Because that would be the only holdup, right? So.
I think staff can answer that a little bit better than I can. I have been talking to some staff members.
Mr. Mack?
Yes, sir. We can have the information available for the next meeting.
All right. Excellent. Good. Good.
That's all I have for now.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. I do want to add one discussion item for today. Nothing serious. Just a quick discussion on whether or not we want to have our July 5th meeting or if you want to just roll that into the next meeting. So we'll, I just want to gauge your thoughts. Do you want to come here on July 5th? I was informed by staff that there really isn't much on the agenda.
No.
So there might be, it might be possible to roll, but let's, let's discuss that later. But let's have that discussion. And what would that be labeled as? 11B. Okay. Future meeting, scheduling of the future meeting will be 11B. That's it for me. And let's go to Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. One, one thing I'd like to, I guess, have staff look at, if y'all are okay with, is when we do that city manager's report, if we could get an update on the future agenda items to see where they lay or, or some type of update at some point in the meeting. That way, we don't have to follow through and that way, staff's on top of it. We're on top of it and nothing kind of falls through the cracks. So if you guys are open to that, you know, maybe we can discuss that.
So one second, Vice Mayor, you want to get clarity on the dates of these future agenda items by having it at a city manager's report? Is that I understand?
Yeah, our staff report. And I understand if we don't have the dates, you know, some of these things may be low-hanging fruit. Some may take a little bit more due diligence. But I would like to get an update at each meeting, you know. That way, you know, we, we are all aware of where everything's at and we're all on the same page and, you know, we can kind of prioritize from there.
I would be open to that. And I'm glad you brought that up. So I wasn't sure if you meant a verbal update or something in writing, because I would like to see written reports from the city manager's office updating us of various topics.
Yep.
I can tell you, there are a lot of things I don't know that I probably should. And maybe a written report would do it. But if you want to discuss it at the meeting as well, I think that's good, too. So this way, we have a sense of, as Commissioner Kelly was asking, when are these coming up? When are they ready?
Yeah, yeah. On, on top of dates, like where are we at? What are some obstacles we've run through? So then that way, like six months down the road, I'm not hearing, oh, well, we couldn't do this because of this statute. You know what I mean? You know, so I kind of want to just be in the loop and all the residents to be in the loop. And, you know, so if we can identify how that would work, that'd be great.
Vice Mayor, I would recommend that we do that right before we adjourn, right? So right before future agenda items, we'll do a quick run-through of the dates. Would that work?
Yeah, that sounds good to me. And, and my intention is to have that like every, maybe every meeting or the first meeting of the month, you know, make this a consistent thing, a consistent report. Does that make sense?
It does. But this is again, just for the future agenda items.
Just for future.
Where things stand.
Yes, correct.
Correct, correct. Well, let's do that right before the end of the meeting.
Perfect. The other thing I want to add is a discussion regarding Town Square to identify how we got to that position. You know, one of the things that, you know, I promised my constituents was government accountability. And I know none of us were involved with, with that situation. It has since been resolved. This is something that I wanted to bring up prior. However, I know that it was sensitive due to ongoing litigation and settlement. And so that is why I have not brought it up. But I would like to kind of gauge where y'all's opinion is on looking into a fact-finding analysis, just to identify what went wrong and more so to make sure that nothing like this happens in the future and, and make sure that the taxpayers are protected from anything like this to happen again. And again, this is more a fact, a fact-finding analysis versus putting the blame on anyone, just kind of identify what happened. And if we need to establish any fail-saves or safeguards, that we do that with policy to make sure this doesn't happen moving forward.
Vice Mayor, one second, Commissioner. Let me just say that I so appreciate what you just said. And so just to immediately answer the question, yes, I'm open to having this discussion. I hope we do have consensus to have this discussion today so we can get a better sense of what it is that you're looking for. But the reason why I say so appreciate you bringing that up is because I think it was about two, three years ago, I asked for the same thing. So precisely for the reasons you said, I want to know what happens. We don't do it again. And two, three years ago, you know, my colleagues at that time responded with silence as if I didn't exist or I hadn't asked the question. So I'm not going to respond to you in silence because I definitely want to know what happened so we can learn from it and put safeguards via policy in place. But we need to, in order to put that in the agenda, do we have majority consensus? Are we comfortable having this discussion so we can better understand what he's looking for?
I'm comfortable with having the discussion, but from the standpoint of lesson learned in turn, not finger pointing or nothing like that. Just understand what happened and how do we move forward without making those same mistakes? So just say, lesson learned would be my way to title it. So, okay.
All right. I'm going to ask any outburst from the audience, if you could please refrain. Commissioner Hay, that is how I understood what Vice Mayor said. And that's certainly the same thing I said. So I'm, I think we're, it sounds like we're on the same page. All right. Any other comments on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Like, how, how specifically would that happen? Because would it be like a consultant? Like, I'm just, I don't know.
Commissioner, that's if we, since we have majority to add this to the agenda, we'll discuss that then. I'm comfortable doing it today so we can, but your question was, how would we go about doing it? That's something that we could discuss during the actual item on the agenda.
I'm just thinking that we, I mean.
Because I, I'm wondering the same thing.
I'm just requesting that we have this conversation.
But not today.
Well, actually.
I'm okay to have it today.
But the staff may not be ready.
And we can, well, I think, I think I'm asking to have this conversation. And then if we have consensus to move forward, then staff would identify how we would go about this because Commissioner Cruz brought up something great about the consultant, would it be internal, you know, versus external? But I think all that is part of the conversation I'm asking for.
Can we maybe move this, if you guys want, if, I mean, I don't know if the board wants to have it today or not. I wasn't really ready to, to discuss this. But if we do, I mean, depending on how many things are pulled out of consent, it could be a lengthy meeting or not. So depending on the time that, of the meeting when we're finished, could we maybe, if there was consensus from the board to have it today, per se, then maybe we could move it to the end so that if it comes to be 11:30 PM and we're still here and we haven't discussed that, we can move that to the next meeting.
I'm okay with that.
So we would do that, if we were to go in that direction, we would have this discussion.
12 Bravo.
Yeah, 12B. So I'm comfortable with having it today because Town Square is not a new topic. And quite frankly, we're not making any final decisions. I just want to better understand what it is that you're looking for, see if it would align with what I'm looking for and so we can give direction to staff. But let's see, how many of us, are we comfortable having a discussion today and at 12B right before the end? So I say, yes, yes, I'm a yes as well. We have majority. All right. We have super majority. All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Is there anything else on your end?
Nope. I just wanted to thank Marketing Eleanor and Jim for the Memorial Day event. I didn't mention that last meeting, so I just want to thank you. It was a great turnout. And, you know, it's, it's a very special event. So thank you again.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
All right. I only have one thing that I would like to add as a presentation for a future meeting, and that is an update on grants. I sent an email about, I think it was two weeks ago, asking for, you know, a question about a specific grant, and I never really got a response. So with that being said, I think that it would be in the best interest of the city and the board to know how many grants we've, you know, we've applied to. We have, I believe we have at least one full-time person working on grants. I'm not sure if there's more. I'm not sure about that. But, you know, right now, when we're at a time of maybe high inflation, the costs of things are significantly increased, right? I think this is the most important time that we should focus on bringing in money from the federal government, from the state government, and any other entities that are providing grants so that we don't put that burden on our taxpayers and our residents. so that we don't put that burden on our taxpayers and our residents. In order to do that, I think the best way to do that is through accountability and making sure that we can get some sort of an update of, okay, we have applied to not only this number of grants, but specifically which grants have we applied to? What was the date of that application? And what was the outcome? You know, was it positive, was it negative? And really just to figure out, are we being successful in our applications to grants? Because I, I have these kind of conversations on, on a weekly basis with staff and stuff, but I just think that it would be beneficial to the board, it would be beneficial to the city to get these updates.
Commissioner, just to make sure I understood what you said, you are looking for a presentation from staff of where we are with grants in general?
So specifically, any grant that within this fiscal year we've applied to.
Okay, status update on current grants and progress.
Well, yes, current and past, so as of the beginning of the fiscal year, what have we applied to and what was the date of that application? And what was the outcome? Was it a yes, we got the money? Or was it a no, we didn't get the money? And if it turns out that every single grant was a no, then maybe, you know, we need to look into finding ways to apply differently or look at, you know, more support, you know, things like that.
Wonderful. I definitely support this. I guess my question is for staff. I don't know how much time you, you need to produce this. Could we have this discussion as early as next meeting if it's an overview? All right, I see Dr. Finance is approaching the podium. Did I say Dr. Finance?
That's good, Dr. Finance.
Good evening, Mara Fredrickson, Director of Financial Services. Hey, that's a new title for me. Um, no, actually Tess, our grants manager, is scheduled for actually the next meeting to give your annual grants presentation, so.
There you go.
Oh, I must be a mind reader, thank you.
The name is going to stick though, Dr. Finance.
All right, is there anything else as it pertains to addition solutions or corrections to the agenda from my colleagues? Seeing none, last call. We have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
I'm moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Kelly, I have a second from Vice Mayor Turkin. All those in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes, the agenda is amended. Now we're moving on to informational items on members of the city commission. I'm going to turn now on my right with Commissioner Cruz. Informational items, and I should also add any disclosures.
Okay, disclosure, I received an email from an individual from Airbnb. I did not get the chance to respond. It was kind of very close to the meeting and I didn't get a chance to meet in person or speak to that person, but just, that's my only disclosure. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor?
I did receive the same email from Joey Plans from Airbnb, same individual, I'm sure. I did have a chance to speak with him, he took it on the chin very well. And, yep, that's all I got.
Okay. I can't speak to my emails, I just came back from the United States Conference of Mayors. So I, I really don't know what's in my inbox yet, but pertaining that item, I haven't had any discussions, to my knowledge. Let's go to Commissioner Haye.
I believe I received that same email. I also attended the Flag Day Celebration for the Haitian Cultural at Sarah Sims Park. Well attended, which is hot. Secondly, today I had the pleasure of representing the council at the Avion Riverwalk Apartments. And I think when you do get an opportunity to visit, it's a, it's a project that we can be proud of here in Boynton Beach. I made a statement to my wife as we were sitting out on the ninth floor, just looking over Boynton, that it almost seemed like you're not in Boynton. It was just beautiful. So I think that the Riverwalk Project was a great success. And I think it's going to bring a lot of residents and business into the city of Boynton. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner. Commissioner Kelly?
Yeah. I too received an email from Airbnb regarding 12A. I also spoke to Bonnie Miskel with regard to 8C. And I attended the Memorial Day, you know, service that we had. Thank you to staff and for Jim Sizik for always putting that together. It was, like Vice Mayor Turkin said, it was well attended and it was a very nice service. So thank you. And that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. As many of you know, I always like to take a moment to recognize a hardworking staff member in our city. We have so many people in the city that is not recognized, working behind the scenes, and they're kicking butt. And we so appreciate everything that they're doing. I want to take a moment to recognize an employee who exemplifies the highest level of public service through kindness. If you've met her, you absolutely know. And dedication to doing the job with excellence. This employee came to us through Career Source, and she has a wonderful story. She came here through Career Source, it's a job placement organization during COVID. And maybe she can talk about what she did during that time. And everyone was immediately drawn to their infectious personality and servant's heart. After the program through Career Source was completed, we were fortunate enough to be able to hire this person in the building department. And then they eventually were promoted to the commission aid position in the city manager's office. Recently, this, and is she here?
Oh, she's back there.
Okay.
She's already sitting next to Tenille.
Okay. Recently, this individual was awarded a scholarship by the Palm Beach County League of Cities to continue pursuing their bachelor's degree while working for the city. It is my honor to recognize city employee Kendra Brown. And. And it is also bittersweet for me to announce that she has received another promotion. She's working her way up, girl. And will continue to serve in the city in the Human Resources Department. Ms. Brown, let me present to you, I'll come down, this, this recognition of all your hard work. You know we love you. And lots of people know that you've been there for them when you, you know, they call on you, you're always there. So thank you.
Thank you guys.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commission, Assistant City Managers, Deputy City Manager, Mr. Doug in his absence. Thank you guys for this recognition, it means a lot. I do come here with a heart and help people every day. And I'm just honored to be recognized for that. I came here, as you said, as a temp employee and.
If you don't mind sharing, what were you doing as a temp employee?
I was, we received a grant for sanitation. It was during COVID. And I was basically wiping down surfaces that people were frequently touching. It was just like a sanitation position during the COVID time to just keep employees safe. And I did that for some time and I met Catherine. She was like, super nice, super nice. And she just told me to start applying and start applying. And I did that. And in the midst of me applying, Mr. Temple offered me a position in the building division. I got in the building division. Solika mentored me from there. I just walked around and I met people, everyone was so nice and Boynton was just a great place for me. I got upstairs and Candace thought she was here. She taught me so much and she just helped me to, to learn the position. And I just took the initiative to start learning things myself. And it's just been great since then. Thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you Kendra. I hope you have a chance to get to know Kendra. She's one of the best. So we're going to move on now to the next portion of the agenda, which is announcements, community and special events and presentations. The first announcement is that Juneteenth Celebration of Freedom Festival hosted by the city of Boynton Beach will be held June 19th. This is Monday, June 19th, from 12:00 PM through 5:00 PM at Sarah Sims Park, located at 209 Northeast 9th Avenue. This free family-friendly event will include music, food trucks, vendors, Kid Zone, and live performances by the J Sharp Band and Valerie Tyson Band. The Juneteenth Committee is hosting the Who's Bad BBQ Cookoff Contest to determine the best griller in the city. Oh, I'm excited for that, I'll be over there. For more information to be a vendor or event sponsor, visit the website, Is there anything else from staff they want to add or did I pretty much cover the announcement? We're good? Okay. The next is a presentation of the Bob Rovey Student Citizen of the Year Award by the Education and Youth Advisory Board. And do we have somebody from the youth advisory? Yes, we do, all right. I will let them take the mic and present the item. Frankie, do you want to open it up?
Yes, so Frankie Lazo, Assistant Director, Recreation and Parks. I'm not going to steal the credit, I just want to say the Education and Youth Board works on the Bob Rovey Student Citizenship Award. We selected a great candidate that was neutral, it was through three judges that we put out there. But I'll pass it over to the board so they can speak a little bit more on that. So I'll give it to Pedro Macedo, Board Member.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City officials. My name is Pedro Macedo, as Frankie introduced me. I'm part of, I'm a member of the Youth Education and Youth Advisory Board. And I would like to present the Bob Rovey Student Citizen of the Year Award. The Bobby Rovey Student Citizen of the Year was created in 2000 and to recognize a graduating high school senior who best optimized the spirit of volunteerism and giving to the community, exemplified by the late Bobby Rovey. A US veteran and former advisory board member who was an active member of the Boynton Beach community. High school seniors write NSA an essay on what they have learned from performing volunteer community service and provide three letters of recommendation. The winner must be of good char, moral character, perform significant volunteer work, and made positive contributions to his or her community. The award, the award was funded through donations secured by the Education Youth Advisory Board. And the winner was, is selected by a panel of judges, including the last year winners, winner. Thank you to the, this year's budget judges, G. Town Shannon of the School District of Palm Beach County, Debbie Majors, and Ben Cheta Buzier, the 2021 recipient. Since the inception of the award, the city of Boynton Beach has distributed $29,250 in awards to 49 high school seniors. This year, the recipient of the 23, 23rd Annual Bobby Rovey Student Citizen of the Year, who received a total amount of $1,000 and have her name placed on a permanent plaque, is Jessica Wilkerson. Jessica graduated near the top of her class from the IB program at the Atlantic Community High School and performed over 1,100 hours of community service. One of the organizations she volunteered for stated that Jessica's professionalism, commitment to learn more and take on more responsibility has made her a great asset. Jessica was a member of the girls lacrosse swim and weightlifting teams through high school and was also a leader in the Student Government Association. Her community service includes volunteering various roles within Lake Worth Playhouse over four-year period in mentoring younger participants that attended their swim summer camps, their summer camps. Serving as appointed student voter to the city of Boynton Beach Education and Youth Advisory Board and volunteering in citywide events. She also volunteered backstage and stagehand for Creative Minds Theater, directing and shooting short film with the purpose of educating youth on the dangers of domestic violence via the AVDA, Aid to Victims of Domestic Abuse. She also served an area manager on the Operations Committee for some fest, which entailed searching for those in need of paramedic and police service and sending the appropriate aid to their location. She also displayed community leadership through her efforts at East-West Karate and Atlantic Community High School. Jessica will attend Santa Fe College and also major in journalism. And her also, she also plans to enter the television broadcasting profession. And congratulations to Jessica.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to say a few words or? Up to you.
They didn't tell me I had to make a speech. That wasn't in the program. Thank you so much, I appreciate this. I thank you to the, to the judges and everybody who selected me. I appreciate it so much and I appreciate this opportunity to, no further, my college education. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. That concludes the announcements and presentations, we're moving on to public audience. This is the portion of the agenda, if you would like to speak, again, you have three minutes. The rules, you know the rules, you've heard in the beginning. This is for items not on the agenda. When we get to the agenda items, and if you'd like to speak on it, you'll have the opportunity to speak then. All right, as always, please begin by stating your name and let me set the timer, give me one moment, all right? Begin when you're ready.
Mark Herr George, 2615 Northeast Third Court. I come because I want to bring up some things that, and to be transparent, I have had this discussion with Mayor Panzerga and Commissioner Haye. There are three things from an economic development standpoint that this city needs to do. And some of them have go back quite a ways, that have been talked about. The time needs to be fractioned. First one is a grocery store on MLK. Years ago, Commissioner Haye, myself, and former Commissioner Orlov, along with CRA staff at the time, worked diligently and we came close, but it fell through because of the market analysis at the time did not support it. Things have changed. There's more rooftops with income, the demographics and geographics have changed to work in our favor. You don't have to carry the ball, you have staff, they need to get working on this. This is something that's been needed for many, 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 many years. Second item, over 20 years ago, a brilliant lady came before the Chamber of Commerce to talk about what Boynton needed. That brilliant lady happens to be a friend of mine by the name of Kelly Smallridge. Kelly's the smartest person in this county when it comes to economic development, bar none. I grant you, I'm a little biased. She talked about the need for Class A office space. We are getting our butt kicked by West Palm and Boca because they have Class A office and we don't. When you sit down with developers, you got to look them straight in the eyes and say, hey, guys, here's a need that we have. Can you work with us? We'll work with you, let's get some Class A office in here and be competitive with our neighbors that are right now getting all that business of companies coming in and creating jobs in West Palm and in Boca. Third thing, we need to have either a boutique hotel or a major flag hotel come into the east of 95. What we have is substandard, point blank, just substandard. I know that there are rumors. I know that there are rumors out there about this. I know there are discussions. I know there are, but we need to make it become a reality. You need to work with CRA staff and the economic development staff to make these things happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Susan Oyer, Boynton Beach. I'm going to say ditto to Mark. I've been yelling at you guys for years about us needing more office space and, and how I'm sick of seeing West Palm, Del Ray, Boca get all the offices, and we're getting more apartments that we don't need as opposed to offices and jobs, high-paying jobs that we desperately do need. But I'm actually here to talk to you about sustainability things tonight because you haven't heard that from me enough over the years. So I'm back on the, we need to be planting more trees, and we need, where is our sustainability person? I brought a sustainability candidate for the directorship job to, to Dan. Where are we at with hiring a sustainability director? Have we hired that person? She was your perfect possible candidate, and she actually lives in High Poluxo, West, West Boynton land, you know, Lake Worth, that kind of area out in there that's kind of, what's its name on this street this week? So you have somebody. We have been the leaders in the state of Florida on sustainability for years, thanks to our last commission. I've got to say thank you to Mayor Grant and Commissioner Katz because they really ran with this and made this city a sustainable leader in our country. Where are we at? Why are we not seeing another sustainability director? I'm also going to mention the Sarah Sims issue. I know we, I saw Commissioner Hay and, and the mayor out at the, the opening with Barb for the Rosenwald Schools, and we, we planted, because I was out there planting them, there was approximately 45 fruit trees planted at the Sarah Sims Park. It was one of the first parks we planted to stop the food desert problem in that neighborhood. And there are, I believe, if I counted correctly, 11 trees left. Where did those 30 trees go to? If they died, why are you all not holding community greening to, to the fire to put more trees in, or why are we not replacing those? We had solved a food desert problem in that neighborhood by having those fruit trees. Every tree was a fruit tree, and now you've lost two-thirds of them. Where are they at, and why are you not getting them back? And my last thing is always is, we need to be looking at removing palms. There needs to be no more palm trees being added to our city. If you want to know why, go take a, a drive on Quantum Boulevard someday off Gateway in front of our old city hall that's now the NYU Langone Building on a day after a storm. Poor Adam has to get emails from me every time there's a storm because that street is loaded with palm fronds for a week before I even email him, waiting for the city to go out and clean up their mess on their street. There's a reason why I keep saying no more palms, and we need to be a leader, and we need to be tackling this, and I am happy to talk to you anytime about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. We have two podiums, so somebody just go. We can always go back and forth. Who is ready, just come on up.
Tori, 106 Nutty 7th Avenue. Yeah, how y'all doing today? Well, I'm calling, I'm coming down here today on behalf of the, the black community, and we're, we're asking for Woodrow Hayes to step down as Commissioner. The communities, we were, we are ready to do whatever to get him off the stand, and we're going to do whatever to get him out the stand. And we just saying this on the record, make sure it's on record that we are saying this, Woodrow Hayes. We asking for your termination in the city of Boynton Beach. You are not being effective to District 2, well, not all of District 2, but the black community. I shouldn't have to call the mayor, the commissioners, to get things across to them. Maybe they'll listen to me. I'm sending pictures, I'm emailing, I'm calling. I don't get any response from this commissioner, and it's a shame. We voted for this, and this is what we get. I got him. I'm not here to scream and yell today. You know, I'm here to make it real clear. Juneteenth, we'll, we'll go on, and we'll be, and I'm, I'm so glad that Juneteenth, I fought in this city to get Juneteenth a recognizable city event. Took me three years, but this is the first year it's being recognized, and that's a good thing. The city workers and the government's workers will get paid off, and I hope Woodrow don't get paid, you know, because we voted for this guy, and this guy came in our community and told us that we didn't vote for him. I don't know people could say that stuff to people, and he meant it because he had tears in his eyes. And I vote, I, I really waited, we really wasted our time voting for this man as our leader, where can't nobody ever get a contact with him? We have to call our mayor, Ty Conserco, and that is bad. That is breaking protocol. You supposed to be able to go through your commissioner, then you go through your mayor, then you can't get to your mayor, you go through your city manager. That's what I was told. But we can't, we don't even have a commissioner in this community to call. This man told us, don't call him. And this, this, who we supposed to call? I'm here crying out as a community, District 2. Woodrow Hayes told us, do not call him. Who do we call? Who, who, who come for us? Do we ask the city manager? No, that's breaking protocol. Do we go straight to the mayor? But we shouldn't have to because we got, we voted in someone, and this guy telling the community that we didn't vote for him. That's what he said, and I'm going to do whatever it take in my community to get him out of that seat, whatever. And thank y'all for y'all time.
All right, next speaker.
Fucking bum!
All right, sir, that was entirely inappropriate. I'm going to ask, to ask you to leave. No, no. Tori, please step out.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I come here today, I'm here to-
Your name for the record, please.
Oh, my name is James Young. I'm a resident of Boynton Beach. I've been here all my life, born and raised. My dad fought in the military as a Vietnam veteran. I come here to, I want to fix the city. I want to help fix the city. You know what I'm saying? I want to, I want to know about show of hands. Do you, do y'all agree with me that the youth is the future? If you agree with that, then I'm in the right place. You know what I'm saying? I got a nonprofit organization. It's Positive Energy Corp., and I'm, I'm looking for investors, I'm looking for donation, I'm looking for charity, so I can help and put things in the black community, far as the white community, far as the Hispanic community, far as the Haitian community. I'm here to help. These kids, they be riding around the streets, you know, they say the kids got hit on cars and riding forward because they have nothing to do. If they don't have football and basketball, it's nothing else for these kids to do. You know what I'm saying? And it's more the world to this football than basketball. You know what I'm saying? We got, you got fishing, you got, you got all kinds of things that you can teach these kids hands-on if that's our future. And I want to bring something, you know, I, I want to put, you could put game, like, I got a little small thing I'm going to give y'all, like game trucks, you know, things like that. It doesn't cost a lot of money. You know what I'm saying? You could put that in the back of a church, and the kids can have somewhere to go and do things. A lot of family members in this is for people that lost their family, lost their dad, are in prison. It's a lot of kids out here where the moms have to work, and they can't be there to take their kids to places to do things. But guess what? I'm that guy. I have that organization. Y'all want to be behind me? Let's roll. Positive Energy Corp. Thank you.
Thank you.
God bless.
All right. Next public comment speaker. Please approach the podium, state your name for the record.
Good evening. Name's Harry Woodward, resident of Boynton Beach, representing Inc. this evening on a couple of issues. One is, I know you guys are working on future stuff, changing some of the codes, the, the city plans and things. Mentioned this before, would like to bring it up again. We, for decades, have been promoting density in this village for a transit-oriented district based on a train station that has no existence in fact anywhere and doesn't exist, will never exist. Bright Line isn't going to give you passenger rights. Why do we continue to have this in there in that district, which generates all kinds of density, also generates all kinds of traffic, and we have TICA thing, so we don't even count the traffic? So could we please, as we go forward and redo these documents, clean them up so we represent truth and honesty in what we're presenting to the world? There's no train station downtown. There's no density allowance for transit oriented because we don't have transit. Okay, bicycles and buses don't count. The other thing is, you guys are working on a thing for the short-term rentals, which is fine. I have one next door. There's only three issues. I know that's on the agenda, but we can't talk about it. There are three issues. We talked to Mike Rump when he was doing this. The issues are obvious. Noise. I can't use my back patio, haven't for 10 years. No longer use the back patio because you can't be out there at weekends. Parking. Can't park anywhere on our street because there's 15 other cars parked there. And the third thing is trash. They have no idea when to put the trash out, and it's not, and you addressed the first two, you addressed a bunch of other things. Mike did a good job. There's nothing referencing trash in here. You got to let these people know the trash days are, trash will be or won't be picked up, and if they don't put it out on time or put it out, and it's been, it's been sitting next door all week now because nobody's picked it up, they put it out after the pickup. So include the trash thing. Those, those are the three biggies. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, other side of the room. One second. All right, state your name for the record, and you may begin.
Thomas, Thomas Jerry Thibault, which they, nurse changes to Thibault, the body odor. I'm sense of humor, huh? I, nature, nature's what I go by, though. That's what everybody knows me as, nature. But Jesus came out of the spiritual realm, took a teacher right of me in the physical realm in 1991. I am the owner of the plantation. And until you guys respect the facts of life, the facts of the way things are, you're on your path to destruction, obliteration. The life system showed me why mankind was made. What created mankind gave me a personal experience, personal experience. I have absolute proof of what created mankind, what God. We created so we'd go back in time and create God. What Jesus did is I have done. Create ourselves. Absolute security. He said, I am, I was, I'm meant to come in that order. I've done the same, but I will always be. The problem is, problem is, is mankind is on a path, it's obliteration from existence, absolutely nothing, nothing. I'm talking, you, you won't be a thought in my, God, in life's mind. You won't ever have a, the life will not even have a thought of coming up with an organism that has the ability to fixing the problems Brachiosaurus created. You know, I'll fix it without having to go back, without having to correct, license having to create an organism to fix it. I'll teach Brachiosaurus. Might take a long time. I'll teach me to trim trees, to say, kill them. If y'all don't want to work with me, make paradise happen, it's crazy. I've got a path to make paradise happen for real. I got a path to, everybody will enjoy themselves, work real easy jobs, real little, like six hours a day at the most. Even if, if you don't want to work that, you only work that. I, I've got, I've got ways of being able to fix all the problems, and, and y'all don't want to, y'all don't want to lift a, lift a hand to make things happen? I mean, you're going to give me disrespect because I don't take part of the system? It's, they're showing people so closed-minded? Makes people so closed-minded? It makes you so mindless? Why would I want to be part of a system like that? Part of society's norm? Society's norm, they don't want to use their brain. They want to let somebody else use their brain for them. Be a robot. That's what's going to destroy you. You can either become life, become perfect, become God in the body, or be obliterated from existence.
All right, next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Reedy. I'm very happy to see that donations are being made from the Law Enforcement Trust Fund to the Boy Scouts. I would like very much to see the Girl Scouts get an equal donation as well, please. I've asked about this long, long, long time ago. I brought this up. Every year, the Boy Scouts get, get a nice donation. Girl Scouts should be up there, too. The other thing I wanted to share with you, I, you know, I don't know how many of you know who Bob Brovie was. I was familiar with Bob because of my work with Little League. I was in charge of jamboree, which was opening day, and Bob Brovie was the person, my go-to guy that I called. He was the chairman of a group of military people. All the different branches came together and they had a group, and they'd drag their great big barbecue thing, and they'd stand, these old fellas would stand and cook hot dogs and hamburgers all day long. The old fire chief stood there and cooked grilled until he had third-degree burns on his hands. So I just wanted to tell you that he was, he was a really swell guy, so congratulations to Jessica.
Thank you. Any other in-person public comment speakers? Seeing no one else approaching the podium, Mani, how many do we have online with their digital hands raised?
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised.
Hearing that, public comments are now closed. We're moving on. We have no items under administrative. We're moving on to consent agenda. Are there any items that my colleagues in the dais would like to pull from consent agenda? It's a lengthy list, so take a moment to do that. I'm sorry, you, go ahead, Commissioner.
Yes, sir. I would like to pull 6E, as in Edward.
Six.
E.
E.
6G. 6K. And that's it.
G and K and E, if I heard you correctly. Vice Mayor, let's go to you.
Commissioner Cruz covered mine. Nothing additional, Mayor.
All right. I have none for now. Let's go to Commissioner Hay.
I do have one.
6I?
Yes. That's it.
All right. Commissioner Kelly.
Mayor, I didn't really want to pull them, but I would like to maybe get, and if it's easier to pull them, I'm just wanting an update about the grants as far as the small business, business grant program, where we are on that. I know there's a couple that are on here, and I understand that from staff that there's a little bit of money left, and so I just was kind of looking, so I don't necessarily want to need to pull it, so I don't know.
Yeah, there's several grant items here. I'm comfortable if the rest are, if we could just have a quick update from staff? Are they prepared to just give a quick update on grants? Let's see.
I can take this, Mayor. I have a temple assistant city manager down here. So the, the small business grants, the marketing digital grants that are included on the agenda, there's three for approval tonight. In total, for the fiscal year, we, we allocate $25,000 in, in funds for the small business digital grants. Previous to this meeting, we've approved, I believe, three others. So with the approval of, of the three this evening, we would have enough funding to approve four more small businesses for this grant.
Thank you for that on-the-spot update. Adam, Commissioner, does that, do you have any questions for him, or did that cover it?
No, that cover, I mean, are we, is that just available on the website? How would somebody find out if they qualify for this marketing and digital connectivity grant?
Yes, ma'am. They can, they can apply online for this, for this grant. We currently have, since Mr. Durgan is out on FMLA, we do have, we still have folks in development that are still administering and processing these grants, so they will be notified as soon as there's an application received, and if they need to provide additional documentation, they'll be notified to do so. I, I will add that we do also have additional funds for commercial build-out grants. Those are less utilized, so we do have the opportunity to reallocate some of those, those funds if we see that they're not going to be utilized, and we could apply those to these digital marketing grants if we see that there's increased demand for those as well.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Adam. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Adam. I just want to reiterate what the pulled items were to make sure I didn't miss anything. I heard item E, G, I, and K. Did I miss anything? Was that it? If there's nothing else from my colleagues, may I have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor, second from Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor of approving the remainder of consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The ayes have it motion passed. Aye. All those who oppose, say no. The ayes have it. Motion passes unanimously. Let's address them in order, beginning with 6E. This is the Piggyback, the Brevard County Contract with SP Designs for the purchase of uniforms for the city's general employees. Commissioner Cruz, you brought this item up. I see Director of Finance.
Doctor.
We're going with doctor now.
We like doctor.
Doctor of Finance, Mara Fredrickson, available if you have any question. Commissioner Cruz, take it away.
So, um, first want to thank staff for, for taking the time, the lengthy time to go over this during the agenda review. Thank you for your patience. Looking at the amount for prior fiscal years, 20 to 21, we spent about $41,000. Fiscal year 21, 22, we spent $57,000. Fiscal year 22, 23, we spent a bit under $48,000. And this one is going up to $95,000. I understand, you know, there's been inflation and all that. So, but just showing how it's almost doubled, the amount that we're spending on the purchase of uniforms for general employees. Is this for polo shorts mainly or what kind of?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Mara Fredrickson, Director of Financial Services. This contract is specifically for our blue and white collar employees, the high-visibility items. It does get utilized for some of the rec leagues and the summer camps for clothing, for those types of things. And then also for staff on an as-needed basis. The $95,000 is just an estimate. We don't anticipate spending to that amount. But we did, as you can see, the last few years, we haven't spent nearly that much. But yeah, it's just a guesstimate of where we anticipate it spending.
Um, one thing that we discussed also during the agenda review was the possibility of using a local business. Because I'm thinking, you know, if it's, if it's a contract such as engineering or something very fancy like GIS or IT where, yes, we may not have that capacity in Boynton Beach. You know, purchasing items such as t-shirts or polo shirts or things that could be very simple to gather from a local business. One of the things that I talked to Andrew about was asking, like, what is the cost per item per se? So that we can maybe look at opening it up to a local vendor to be able to purchase if they can, if they can equal the price. If they can give us the same price that the Piggyback contract is giving us, then maybe it would be something beneficial where we can get the sales taxes from that revenue and we're also supporting a local business. I see the contract here allows for three additional one-year renewals. I want to see if maybe I could get, you know, permission from the board to maybe look at it to be a one-year renewal with a potential to renew if we don't find a local vendor within a one-year period that can provide polo shirts for the city of Boynton Beach. You know, I think that's something that's very simple to obtain. And I'm sure that there are local businesses that could, you know, support us with that if we give them the opportunity. So I guess that's kind of what I wanted to say, you know, if the board agrees, then maybe instead of doing it a three-year, um, three additional one-year renewals, just doing it for one year and then coming back to the board a year later, we can always renew it again if we don't find a local vendor to support that cost. But if we do, then we're opening it up and we're actually doing something tangible and something effective towards that. That's all.
Yeah, I was going to say, we did bid this out as our own bid in fiscal year 20. We did get one local vendor that did bid. They were the third in line. So they, just pricing-wise, they came in lower than some of the, or higher than, you know, some of the other vendors. We do seek the local vendors for some of the random quotes, anything under, you know, that $50,000 threshold. If we're just going out for a department or things like that, we do obviously seek. We did actually reach out to a local vendor for this to see if there was an item that we could piggyback for them. They actually did not have a contract that we could piggyback off of. So we would have to bid this out again to offer that to the local vendor.
So would it be, from a implementation perspective, if the board were to agree, would we just do a one-year, like, yes, we approve it today? And then we give ourselves a one-year period to open it up to a local business? Because, I mean, it, looking at prior fiscal years, two of them come within the under $50,000 range. But then at this year, it crosses that $50,000 range.
Oh, yeah. You, the board has the option. You could do just the one-year renewal and we could bring it back to you next year for approval. That's certainly an option.
But we'll be looking for, or opening it up to a local vendor in the meantime. Yes. So that, that was it. Just wanted to bring it up. I don't know if the board agrees or disagrees, but just wanted to bring that up.
Commissioner, as always, I want to make sure I understand the intention of every member who proposes as an item. You would like to decrease the duration of the contract to allow for more opportunities, for local opportunities, one year hereafter. Is that my, do I understand you correct?
So, yes, Mayor. Basically, instead of doing a three-year contract, we would do a one-year contract. And then we would do a TBD if we do not find a local vendor within the year that matches the price, that can give us an equal price, um, pretty similar price. Then we would just continue to renew this contract next year.
All right. Commissioner Kelly, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, I, I reviewed this. Thank you, Commissioner Cruz. But it looks like we're at the last year of the four-year contract. So I'm just wondering, it started in fiscal year 21 and it's, we've had three renewals and now this would be the fourth. So aren't we at the, are we nearing the end of the contract?
This goes through June of '24, yeah.
Right.
So we would be bidding it out next year regardless.
Okay. Thank you.
That's three years. That's why I was confused.
It has, so it says the contract allows for three additional one-year renewals. This is the last one-year renewal for the contract.
Oh, okay. So basically, if we just approve it today, regardless, it's going to be bid next year.
Right.
And we'll be working towards getting a local vendor. Okay. Great.
All right. Thank you. Well, that's, that's good news. Sounds like the goal is met. Anybody else want to add anything? Any questions for Mara while she's up here?
Thank you, Mara.
All right. See no other discussion on this item. May I have a motion to approve item 6E? I heard the motion from Commissioner Cruz. I heard the second from Vice Mayor Turkin. All those in favor of approving item 6E, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose, say no. The ayes have it. Motion passes unanimously. The next item that was pulled was 6G. This is the state forfeiture donation, law enforcement trust fund and their donations. The chief, I see, is available. If any of my colleagues would like to begin. Commissioner Cruz, I think you're the one who pulled this.
Yes, I did. Thank you, Mayor. The reason why I wanted to pull it, first of all, is because I saw Boy Scouts and not Girl Scouts. However, I would actually like to table the item and have further discussion and then have this be brought back in the future if the board is okay with it.
All right. I see our deputy city manager would like to chime in.
Would ask that if we could approve for the Boynton Bulldogs, there are some funds there that they, it's time-sensitive for them. So if we could at least prove that, then that would be great, if it's chief is in agreement with that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I'm okay with it. All right. I'll support that.
So Commissioner Kelly, see your hand is up. Go ahead.
I, I guess before I, I'm fine with tabling it, but I just had one question. Chief, is this the, are you maxed out of funds at this point? There's always funds available. So even if we approve this, there would be funds available if another organization applied for it. How would they, like Girl Scout, that was, and you can ask Adam Temple. He was in my agenda review and that's exactly what I said, is I said, what about the Girl Scouts? Because my daughter is Girl Scout. So, um, and I understand that there is a kind of a process they have to have asked for and then kind of applied for and reached out to the police department. So I'm fine with tabling it. I just, those were things that I had talked about in my agenda review. And I just wanted to clarify that, you know, this isn't like all of the money that's there. And so there's other opportunities if we didn't want to table it and we wanted to move forward. And there's a process. It's my understanding, right?
There is a process. I could probably clarify or at least clear up a few things. The Boy Scouts of America is actually the post for our Explorer program. So in order for us to have an Explorer program, we have to be affiliated with the Boy Scout America, the particular post. So that's where that money comes from. We are starting our Explorer program back up. We're hoping to use it as a pipeline to be future leaders in law enforcement, whether it's a public safety aide or dispatcher or records section. So when they're, when they age out of the Explorer program, they can go into some type of public service at the age of 18. As a law enforcement officer, you have to be 20 and a half. So we're trying to bridge that gap and not lose these young men and women when they leave our program and then go and do other things. So that's, that's the Boy Scout of America. We do have a process. We posted on our, our webpage. It'll be posted very soon, by August, beginning of September, we, we accept the applications. So if Girl Scouts of America wants to be part of the law enforcement trust fund donations, they would fill out the application. They ask about the scope of it and about the mission. And then in October, we go over all the applications and then we kind of rank it based on their mission and how it aligns with our mission and the needs of the city. And we, we award the law enforcement trust fund. So we, we welcome Girl Scouts of America to apply and I'll let everyone know when it gets posted. And that way, we can make sure that the local post is aware of it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Chief. Vice Mayor, you had a question.
So would, would you guys be okay with just approving this? I know we pulled the Billy Tome Foundation line item. And then we can just bring the Girl Scouts back on another agenda. That way, we don't have to wait on these, if there's something time-sensitive. Is that a mutual resolution?
That, that sounds like a good compromise, that, that we would go ahead and approve them and then we can bring it back later.
Okay. And can we have, can we have y'all reach out to Girl Scouts? Or do they have to reach out to you first?
You can let them know that the opportunity exists and they, it's up to them if they want to fill out the application, go through the process. It's fairly simple. We can certainly help them fill that out. And that won't be until the, the summer. And then I'll, I'll come back in November, asking for some more money.
Chief, I can connect you. Sandra, who usually attends the meetings, I'm surprised she's not here. She actually is one of the troop leaders for the Girl Scouts group that meets in our Arts and Cultural Center. And she's usually here tonight. So, but I can connect you with her. And she's who I would have, you know, given this information to because it's our local troop that meets right here in Boynton Beach. So.
Watson.
Yes.
Awesome.
All right. So let's do this. So I know that our deputy city manager said that the Bulldogs, it's time-sensitive. So let's at least move forward with that. Is that my understanding with my colleagues?
I think we're going to move forward with everything. Well, except for the Billy Tome because staff removed that. And then Chief DeGiulio is going to reach out to Girl Scouts of America and we're going to bring that back to this item and then he's going to ask for more money in November.
Yes. Not a lot of money.
Okay. I need to make sure everybody's good with that. Are we good?
Yes.
It was, it was Commissioner Cruz.
Okay. All right. Is, there's, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve item 6G? Again, this is without the Billy Tome Foundation line item.
So move.
Second.
All right. There's a motion from the Vice Mayor, second from Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose, say no. The ayes have it. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are now moving on to item I. This was pulled from Commissioner Hay. This is proposed resolution number R23-072, waiver of right of first refusal. Who do we have to, oh, all right, we've got RJ.
I guess the, the question is more informational, just to have you comment on this item and the impact in the future with these, with this type of move.
RJ, I'm the community improvement manager, Mayor Commissioners, apologize. You meaning this type of move when approving the waiver of right of first refusal?
The chip program.
Yes, sir.
When we have, I know we have no interest in buying this and we're going to recoup X amount of dollars, $16,000 plus dollars.
Yes, sir.
Okay, but I'm, I'm looking at potential influx of this. What, is there a position the city is going to take on these type of moves by residents who are, who bought back then and decide to, I don't want it anymore type of, I want to sell? Just want you to comment and explain to us this particular item.
Yeah, absolutely.
What the impact is.
Yeah, absolutely.
Going further down the road.
Yes, sir. So the waiver of right of refusal, it goes along with the local housing system plan at the time, where this waiver was put in place to be able, for the city to have the opportunity to be able to purchase the property back. So in this particular item and some of the items that are out there, CRA and the city have a waiver of right of first refusal, where when a person sells the house, CRA can refuse and, uh, actually CRA can take hold of the right of first refusal and buy the property back. So design the city. So this item comes to you and went to CRA. And the reason being is because, you know, you, there is two separate legal entities. So in the future, if the city chooses, we choose to buy this property or any property in the future, the city could do that. So this house is being sold at what is considered a full price. The maximum, what is called the chip program, considered a full price, the state housing initiative and partnership program, is $382,194. So it's, it's still so, so below the, what is called the maximum price. So now the, these funds, whatever funds the city recoup in the future or has recouped in the past is what is considered program income. So these $16,000 plus a share equity. There was also a share equity if the sale was sold before the 15 or 30-year period, depending which was under the contract. So that goes back to the chip program. So that can be utilized for all the different strategies that the chip program uses at this point. So once again, in order for the city to buy these, these properties, the city will have to amend the L-HAB and add a acquisition of a property where the city could buy this property and resell it to another chip participant, another client. So in order, once again, to permit to do that, I will have to amend the L-HAB, the local housing system plan, and then we have the ability to be able to purchase this property. In this particular case, because the, the right of first refusal has been already waived by CRA. So then us, it just made sense for us to proceed with the, the selling of the property, given the circumstances of what the client at this point is selling, Ms. McCormick. So because of, uh, she's in danger, her family is in danger. And they, she is very concerned that they've been shooting in, in her neighborhood and she wants to sell the house as quick, as quick as possible. So we don't want to stall the process. We want to move forward. That's what this item was placed in the very next agenda item, to move this forward as quick as possible for, for them.
Very good. Very good. Thank you very much.
Of course.
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
This is an item 6I. Motion and a second. All those in favor. I'm sitting, that was a motion from him. All right, second from Commissioner Cruz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. All those oppose? All right, motion passes. All right, next pulled item, this is the last pulled item, if not mistaken, was 6K. This is proposed resolution number R23-074, restaurant concession for the Lynx at Boynton Beach. Do we have someone from staff? There we go. And Commissioner Cruz, you were the one to pull this item. If you want to open your questions and comments.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The reason why I pulled this, this item, it's because I had some questions in regard to the bid process and how that went through. And also the amount of payment that the vendor is proposing to give us. According to the document attached, it says that the vendor will give us 2% of the gross sales over $20,000 per month, which means that anything under $20,000 a month, we're getting absolutely no, nothing. No revenue, nothing at all. And it doesn't appear that there's any payment or cost for the actual space. If you go to any, any restaurant owner that's trying to have their restaurant at a location, I understand this is different. It's a city property and whatnot. But they have to pay something for this space. So it just, to me, it seems like it's, it's a bit, we're just giving it away. I don't know if this is the, the best way that we can, you know, do this. And I also had some, you know, we, we had some discussions during the agenda review, but I did have questions specifically regarding the purchasing policy, Section X. Can you walk me through that or can you walk us through that and let us know how, how that? Can you walk me through that or can you walk us through that and let us know how, how that functions?
My name's Christina Pinto. I'm the purchasing manager for the city. Good evening. Um, this particular, um, item went to RFP back in twenty twenty-one. At the end of the RFP process, it was, we had two proposers. One of them was deemed non-responsive and it never came to commission. There were situations that happened in twenty twenty-two with the previous vendor that's been in that location. Inevitably, the city settled with that vendor and he just left the property on May thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. The proposer who had originally would have been awarded that is Mr. Um, Studebaker and Mr. Wong. They put in a good proposal. We have no baseline for that property. We have no idea how much income that vendor was making that was there. They were only paying the city six hundred dollars a month using our beer and wine license. They've, so we were in a really desperate situation. The kitchen in that location, this, this vendor is going to have to put out like twenty-eight to thirty thousand dollars to get that kitchen back up and running. For his investment in something that we can't give him statistics on how much revenue was made by the prior vendor. We went with the negotiation where we don't know how much you're going to make. Our other vendor did not have a beverage cart that cruised through the course, giving patrons drinks and sandwiches. So on that, we went with the, the two percent for the, um, over the gross sales. They're going to be providing their gross sales of the beer and they're using their own liquor license. So they'll be serving much harder than what we serve as beer and wine. And that there was no costs for the first two years because of their input of capital to get the project started. That's how that negotiation went. Do you have more questions?
Well, from that perspective, I mean, I know a lot of business owners who open restaurants and every single one of them had to pay for a brand new kitchen. So I don't know if that's, um, you know, a, a, a big deal per se. I think that's more of a necessity, no matter where this vendor or any vendor or any business owner would need to open their business, they would need to do that. I did have a bit of a concern because I do understand that we had a, a legal situation with the prior vendor and I believe that's been settled. Is that correct, Mike?
Yes, we resolved that matter.
Um, and the reason for that was related to an RFP, is that correct? Or related to the contract?
The RFP.
Yeah, it was related to the RFP.
Okay, so we've had a lawsuit in the past for the golf course related to an RFP. And today we're awarding a contract. And so we're talking about the RFP per se. What was the outcome of this RFP?
Outcome would have been that the Mr. Um, Studebaker and Mr. Wong would have won the contract for the Links.
So, okay, so during, I mean, I've, I've asked questions before and the understanding that I got is what the RFP was terminated, is that correct?
It was canceled on September of twenty twenty-two.
Okay, so was it awarded or was it canceled?
It's canceled.
Okay. So that, that's my question because we've already been sued in the past due to RFPs. And no detail there, but I'm just trying to protect the city from any potential liability in the future. This just seems very, I don't want to say similar situation, but it just, there are some similarities in there. I looked at, thank you to staff for helping me, um, show me how to do that, but I was able to go through the city website to go through the RFPs and to see this one in specific. And it was not something that was awarded, it was something that was terminated and there were four people or four entities per se that picked up the package. One of them was disqualified and the other one, so there could be a question of timeframe, like how much time did we give? You know, the vendors to be able to?
The standard RFP is it must be on the street for at least thirty days. We usually do a pre-bid conference or a site visit within the first week or two, give them another additional week for questions and there must be by statute ten days before it closes.
Okay, so just because I'm not an expert on RFPs and the bidding process, can you walk me through what section X in the purchasing policy means? It says alternative to formal sealed bids, fourteen rejection of bids or proposals direct negotiation when the competitive solicitation process did not result in the adequate competition or did not resolve in a contract that would be in the best interest of the city of Boynton Beach. So it did not result in adequate competition.
Did not result in a adequate competition because there was, it was canceled and there was only one vendor. And it also goes on to state that, um, it was in the best interest of the city at that time to cancel that RFP.
I'm, I'm sorry, let me, can I just jump in real quickly? Could you just, city attorney, if you could remind me, why do, why did that get canceled? What was the backstory?
My understanding is that there was an issue of a bid protest and as a result of the bid protest, um, the bid was canceled. It was before I started doing the day-to-day work here, but my understanding is that there was an issue with the bid and that as a result, it was determined that it was best to just, uh, cancel the procurement process. And so no, no award was recommended to bring forward.
And, and when in that psych, I'm sorry to interrupt Commissioner Cruz, it's just, I didn't want this to keep going without answering that question. In that duration of time for the RFP, when was it canceled? Was it canceled halfway? Did we make it to twenty days out? I mean, when was it canceled relative to that?
Originally started when I was going through the being responsive part of the solicitation. And on one of the forms, it asks if you have ever had any litigation or arbitration in the last five years. And the person and the entity had written N A. And when I looked online, he had sued the Village of Palm Beach Gardens.
Oh, I'm not asking for the reason.
I know, but I disqualified him for that. And then that, when we were bringing it, he was like, no, 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 that doesn't count. But legal had supported the decision to make him disqualified. So before we could come to commission, they filed an injunction to stop this agenda item from coming. So we were never able to bring it. And then he filed two lawsuits, I believe. And everything was just put on hold. And when they negotiated with the vendor, I was told to issue a notice of cancellation in September and he was able to stay until May thirty-first of this year.
Okay, thank you for that information. Not quite what I asked for. I just want to know, how long was the RFP out?
This RFP.
Yes, because you said it was canceled for all those reasons, not contesting that. I just want to know how long was the RFP out?
It was.
When was it canceled relative to when it began?
It was published on November tenth, twenty twenty-one, and it was canceled on September twentieth, twenty twenty-two.
Was after the, the responses had been received by the city and been reviewed by staff and one of them deemed to be, um, disqualified. So it was after the process has gone through and we had received the two, the proposals from the two bidders.
Okay, thank you. Again, I apologize for interrupting. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Okay. Um, yeah, so it just, the whole part where it states that the RFP was terminated makes me a bit nervous because I don't want us to end up in the same situation again. I want to avoid any potential legal issues at all. So city attorney, can you assure us that we're not going to have any legal issues?
Well, I, I can assure you, but I can tell you that this is part of our procurement code. It's not unusual that if you had an unsuccessful solicitation, that you do a direct negotiation with your second time around. But, um, you know, I, I don't know of any issues out there. Nobody's made me aware of any legal objections to this. So, um, you know, again, it's a, if you go to and you follow your procurement and you follow it in good faith, you're generally not going to be liable for anything.
What about the other two people that didn't get to submit their bid before it was canceled? Would those two parties then potentially?
In bids and tenders, you can look at the solicitation, you can download it, but if you don't submit it by the due date, it's not, you're not allowed to send it in late.
And what was the due date for, for the solicitation?
We'd have to say sometime in January. I don't have the exact date because the selection committee meeting was scheduled for February eleventh, twenty twenty-two. I don't think I have it. Oh, it closed December tenth, twenty twenty-one.
How many submissions were in that? How many submissions were in that?
Two.
Okay, so, so it was open up until December tenth, twenty twenty-one?
Right. It was published in November tenth. It closed on December tenth.
Okay, so it was a month that it was open. And what's the legal timeframe or the correct timeframe for, for a bid to be open?
Yes, unless you have multiple questions and then you extend it.
So the, the time, the legal timeframe attorney would be thirty days?
That's, that's typical is thirty days. Again, it can be extended if there's issues, like you said, addenda needs to be done, those kind of things, yes.
Okay, so by, by the time that the RFP was terminated, it would have given a fair chance for the other two entities to apply?
No, it was actually closed on December tenth. No one else could have applied for it. It's only open for that thirty day period only.
So she started, the answer would no, but the answer is yes. Because the bid, it closed and by that, when it closed, nobody else could have come in. So when it closed, there were two. And then later on, it was terminated. So prior to the termination, nobody else could have joined it as of the closed date of December of twenty-one.
Because there was a thirty day window before termination. All right, if you're telling me that it's fine for the attorney. I just, I just want to make sure that we're doing the, the process correctly and that there's nothing that we could, because we've already been sued in this specific location for the same, for a similar purpose. So we just want to be very careful with that. And yeah, that, that was my, my main thing. So I guess I'll, I'll let the rest of the board speak.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's go to Vice Mayor.
No, great points, Commissioner Cruz. I don't have any questions. I'm okay to move forward with the motion to approve this.
All right, let's go to my colleagues on my left. Commissioner Kelly, do you want to add anything? Questions, comments?
No, just, um, Commissioner Cruz asked, um, all of the questions I had. The, so just for clarity sake, the reason this is just now coming to us is because of the delay and the injunctions that were filed. And now that that is gone and that is past us, now we can move forward with the selection that you had previously, or you could select because of the whole situation.
Correct, the vendor just left on May thirty-first.
Right.
We had resolved that and that there was a date for them to exit the premises of May thirty-first.
Great, thank you. That's all.
Commissioner Hay, questions, thoughts?
So no questions for me.
All right. Commissioner, thank you for bringing this up. I heard two, um, lanes of thought from your, from your questions. One was, is this a good deal? You were asking about the payments. Uh, and then the second one was about the process. You know, this was your request to pull, so I'm going to defer to your lead on this. I mean, I, I have to say that from my standpoint, um, and I understand what's already been said, but there is a part of me that wonders if we can get a better deal. But perhaps this is the best deal. I don't, I don't really know. But, so I'll, I'll defer to you, uh, Commissioner.
Yeah. Well, I guess we have two options here, right? Theoretically speaking, we could accept this as is and get absolutely no revenue under twenty thousand dollars. Or I don't know if that's a possibility to send it out to bid again and give people an opportunity to bid. It, it could be the same bidder that applies, but maybe with better terms. And maybe the other two that had originally requested packets would give those people a chance to submit. I don't know, I'm just thinking, you know, I don't think this is a good deal. I don't think that getting absolutely no profit under twenty thousand dollars for the space and are they using our license as well, our food license?
They're not using our license, they're using their own, um, alcohol license. I think the volume of players that are going through the golf course through a weekend, if they all bought one drink, we would make that twenty thousand in a week. I mean, but we just really don't have any basis to, to justify anything more. In years three through five, I believe we're getting a thousand dollars a month plus. And as the business grows and their revenue increases, we did not really have a restaurant there. It was, I don't know if any of you played at the Links. I, I don't know because I don't golf, but I, from my understanding, it just wasn't a real. I think that this is a, a good opportunity for us to make a lot more than we were making. And we've got another concessionaire coming up at Oceanfront Park soon that we're going to open up somehow to anybody that's interested.
RFP, okay.
And we have a cafe, the City Hall Cafe.
I don't know anything about the City Hall Cafe. This is the first time I hear about it, so, um, great. So, yeah, I, I, I stand firm. I, I don't believe that anything under, getting absolutely nothing under twenty thousand dollars, even if it was two percent for everything at all, or even some sort of payment for the space. I mean, the cost of rent anywhere you go, and as you said, there's a lot of patrons. You know, we're not getting, we're not getting a public benefit, in my opinion, or not enough of a public benefit. But that's, that's my, my view. The board can disagree or agree. I think that we could have potentially gotten a better, better deal if we would have maybe, um, let it out for longer or not. You know, there's no guarantee of that. I don't believe that this is the best deal that we could have gotten. But thank you for answering all the questions about the RFP. That was really helpful for me to understand. And that's all I'm going to say now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, what is your proposal to move forward? If you think we can get a better deal, are you recommending we do another thirty days? What, what, what is it that you would like to see? What's your recommendation?
I mean, there's no guarantee, right? But if we were to send it out for bid for thirty days to see what comes in and what opportunities come in, we could potentially see if there's a better RFP that comes in or not. And then if there isn't, then we could move forward with this deal.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, let's go to Vice Mayor and then we'll go back around to my left.
So gross leases are a normal thing. You see them all the time in the real estate world. I do agree with, we, was this the only other bidder?
At that.
And so we had nobody else. And so if we came to them and said, hey, no deal, we don't like it, then we're going to leave the Links, the golf course, empty. Which if I'm a, you know, if I'm a frequent golfer there, I'm going to be a little bit upset. And I can tell you, I've golfed at that course twice, not well at all. I am a horrible golfer, but I do appreciate a good clubhouse. And when I was there, it was, I, I think there's definitely an opportunity there and, you know, I'm, you know, not sure what the last vendor did or didn't do. I, I don't want, and I, I, I imagine that the winters are a little bit busier than the summertime. Would you say that is accurate now? So I don't want to hold off too much on this, especially if we have a vendor that is willing to put in capital into, um, into a, a private building. So they're putting in capital, that is, there's the public benefit right there is you have a private vendor putting in capital, right? Which we see all the time in mixed use projects. And I also don't want to get golf, you know, people who utilize that course get excited that there's a new vendor coming because of, in my personal opinion, the last, it, it just that, it was like a ghost town in that clubhouse and it just was not to my personal par, right? And if there wasn't another vendor when we had, when we had bid it out, I, I don't want to leave that place empty. So I, I mean, I'm open to moving forward. I'm open to renegotiating. I just want to stress the importance of like what's going on there now and how we want to generate revenue, right? Like, we don't want to lose people utilizing that course because they don't have somewhere to get refreshments afterwards, right? I mean, if you've played nine holes, that's a lot. You played eighteen, especially during the summertime, that's a hot day. That's a real hot day. So I, I don't want to stall this, but I do agree with my colleagues as far as getting the best deals. So, you know, maybe we can postpone this to the next meeting and see if they're willing to negotiate. Oh, they're here. So, I mean, can we?
I, I, I'm open to hearing them, but what I do not want to see happen is people negotiating on the days.
Fine.
Yeah, that is not good protocol in general, no matter what the topic is. Anything else, Vice Mayor?
No.
All right, let's turn to my colleagues on my left, Commissioner Hay or, uh, Kelly? Do you have any input based on that discussion?
Yeah, I understand what, uh, both the Vice Mayor and Commissioner, uh, Cruzes are saying, I really do. But, um, I am ready to move forward with the. I am ready to move forward with the deal as is. I've been out there knocking a few balls around at that spot, which you could call it too, because I don't know what I'm doing. But I want to to move it ahead and I'm satisfied with what's been proposed by staff.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kelly.
Yeah, I just I have concerns like Vice Mayor about, you know, where this leaves the golf course. And I, you know, as much as, you know, this has been going on and unfortunately not for any of our or anyone's fault except for, you know, litigious person. You know, we're in this situation where we have a golf course that could be utilized and fully, and it's not being. And as much as I would, you know, like to have a better deal, so to speak, I don't even know if this is if this is common. And this is, I mean, this could be exactly what all the golf courses do because the concessions sales are usually alcohol driven and so that's, you know, increases the price. And so this may be exactly what is the norm. I don't know that because I have never looked into that. But I'm, you know, was, I guess, is this contract based on what our RFP was? Like, did we?
The original RFP asked for a baseline price. Again, the vendor that was currently there, we could not prove anything of to how much revenue he was making. So that left us with really no place other than the six hundred dollars that the Links is currently getting from the old vendor. That was six hundred a month.
And the and the, did we have a previous vendor in there before? I mean, are we really like starting completely?
Over.
Over? We have nothing to base this on because it has been virtually vacant or barely used for
A long time.
A long time.
It may be used the how many golfers go through the golf course as just an idea of how many golfers a month go through there. And if they only bought one drink or a cup of coffee, how much revenue, it would be well over the twenty thousand dollars that they're using as a baseline price.
Right. And so, I mean, I guess I'm a little bit, I'm more, I'm comfortable moving forward because it's a five year contract. We're gonna be able to set and figure out where where we end up. I'm I'm just afraid that we're gonna end up, you know, another thirty days and we're we go out to RFP, we get maybe the same bid, or maybe we don't get any because they're done dealing with us. And now we have a golf course that's really doesn't have anything. And so then we're starting even behind the eight ball again. So those are my concerns. I think if it was a a longer contract, I would be a little bit more hesitant. I'm just because, but because we don't have that baseline and we don't have anything to gear it towards, I feel like we have to, we have to set a baseline. We have to start somewhere. And, you know, I I don't want to leave it empty either and run that risk. So those are, those are my thoughts on that.
All right, thank you. Deputy City Manager, I saw your hand was up.
Yes, yes, Mayor. The Golf Course Manager, Beau Preston, is here. I asked if you could actually let him come up and maybe weigh in a little bit on the impacts to the golf course and or his opinion of how this potentially could.
I see multiple head nods. All right, Mr. Preston, come on up. I just want to remind everybody, we will not have a negotiating free for all on the dais. This is for informational only.
Good evening. My name is Beau Preston. I'm the Golf Course Manager at Links Point Beach. From my background, the kitchen is now empty. There is no equipment in it whatsoever. When we spoke with the vendor, I suggested that in in place of us having to spend thirty to thirty five thousand dollars easily on replacing all that equipment, that they replace the equipment for rent for no rent for two years. Okay, so we are getting a benefit. The customer service benefit, as the Vice Mayor spoke, is huge. We do about three hundred and fifty rounds a day, average. Ten dollars per person, eight dollars per person, gets well above that twenty thousand dollars. And we are going to employ a beverage cart. That alone, as the Vice Mayor might know, that's a big revenue producer. I happen to know the history of this vendor. I worked with them at Osprey Point. And their their service, their food, everything is is top notch. So that's pretty much what I have to say. They're they're a professional outfit. And again, we have no equipment in there at all. There's not a beer, there's not a, there's a one cooler that we have. There's no kitchen equipment. They don't even have a hibachi that they could cook hamburger on. They have nothing. They do have an ice machine, yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Preston. Are there any questions for my colleagues for Mr. Preston? All right, I'd like to just weigh in here a little bit. Beau, thank you for everything you do. I had a great time at the golf course the other week. And generally speaking, there is, yes, I was at the golf course.
How'd you play? How'd you shoot?
Oh, I didn't. No. And I need some training. That's what I need. In general, I think the whole facility, A, needs some work. The fields are great, but we need some work in the actual building. I don't disagree with you that we need a vendor there and we need one that is high level. You know, we do have a lot of people that go through there. And they expect a certain level of service befitting one of the most popular municipal golf courses in the county. So I'm actually somewhere in the middle of all of this for slightly different reasons. Number one, Commissioner Kelly, you mentioned it's five years. I completely understand that we need a baseline. No notice discrepancy there. But because it is five years, part of me is thinking, well, what's thirty more days? And if they really are the best, well, great, congratulations, right? But what is thirty more days if we were to put it back out there? Maybe there will be some renegotiation. Maybe the terms get better, knowing that there may be competition. And if not, again, great, congratulations. My question is, because now we do have this conundrum where there may be a gap if this board moves forward with republishing of of the RFP. My question to staff is, was there any reason why you brought this item up now and not before the other vendor left? Because you, because it kind of presumes we were just gonna automatically agree to it, right? So that, in other words, for transition purposes, you want to do it a little bit. And was there a technical reason why we couldn't do that?
Great question.
Because I I mean, honestly, it kind of assumes that we were just gonna agree to it.
We, there was an agreement to have him leave two opportunities for the previous vendor to leave in March with some sort of incentive to leave early and in May. And given the history, we wanted to be sure that he would honor the terms of the settlement before we engaged in any meaningful work on the replacement. And that kind of left us with waiting until the end of the term that old vendor could be there for until some real work was on to bring in the next vendor. So the the nature of the way the other matter was resolving itself created the timing issue we have.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for presenting. You've made really great points, Beau. And welcome to the golf course. I understand you started in January and I found out yesterday. So that's great. I think that I think the issue here might be communication. The first time that I, as a commissioner, found out that this was happening was at my agenda review and reading the agenda when it was publicly posted. If we were to have gotten some sort of phone call, information, anything saying, hey, this is what's happening. FYI, this is occurring in the golf course. We're gonna have, you know, we had an RFP, like a little bit of information of what is happening before something has to be voted on, maybe things would have been a little bit different. And so, as you can understand, you know, it was a bit of a shock to say, okay, all of a sudden, this one vendor is getting a five year contract. They're paying absolutely nothing for two years except over twenty thousand dollar profit. And that, for me, started ringing alarm bells. So maybe it was a communication thing. Maybe we should start communicating things before they come up for commission in some way, shape or form. And just to explain my perspective, that is the way that I was a little bit, it had a bit of a negative connotation to me because it it kind of rubbed me the wrong way where I'm like, wait a minute. This vendor is getting this, the RFP was terminated, it wasn't actually awarded, which was kind of more alarm bells. And the lawsuit from the previous vendor that was ultimately let go or disqualified, whatever the right term might be. It was just a lot of unknowns and all of a sudden, boom, this is happening. And it was also in the consent agenda. So just to explain why, you know, I felt the way I felt and I had the questions that I had. Do I believe that we could be getting a better deal? I don't know. But I do understand the perspective of we have the golf course, we might not want to have people going in there without anything to eat or drink. Again, this was all very last minute to me personally. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Commissioner, you you brought this item and you you don't have to give it now, but you know, what exactly is your final position and proposal? Do you want to move forward? Do you want to go and republish for thirty days? You know, this was your item that you pulled. So again, if you just want to hear from others first and then make up your mind, but whichever we'd like to know. Vice Mayor?
Just out of curiosity, and I and I did make a motion to approve this, just so. How how much, can I get like an estimated cost of that investment for the kitchen that you guys are looking to?
Thousand dollars.
Yes, I'm comfortable. Please introduce yourselves. Again, just informational, we're not negotiating.
Absolutely. My name's Andy Studebaker. This is Wiley Wong, my partner. Thank you all for taking the time. And to answer to your question directly, it's around twenty eight to thirty two thousand dollars of investment. There was also other questions that we heard about what's normal, what's not. We also are the vendors at Osprey Golf Course and Okehealy and Boca Golf and Racquet Club. So if if you would like us to answer some of those questions about what you had asked, we'd be happy to and and kind of clarify what other people do and why we approached it the way we did. Is that, that's okay?
Yeah, I I would love to hear about the leases at your other sites.
So we had originally started Okehealy. They had bought all new equipment and we walked in there. We took over, we did some great things with them, which also led us to get to know the counties and and them coming to us for things when they, or at least letting us know when RFPs came up, which also led to Osprey Point. Same thing, all the equipment was already there. There's no capital investment. We paid them rent. That's it. We were approached by Boca Golf and Racquet Club. It's the exact same thing. So there is a very similar situation, except that they had all the equipment there, but they had no baseline for their sales because it was donated from this private entity to the city. So, for example, at that location, we also pay no rent for, I believe, two years.
Yes.
First two years.
So we know a baseline there. And then we're gonna talk about what rent will be at that point.
Correct. So they get their numbers so they can come back and we can renegotiate at that point. With all of these, the equipment is always there. I know that's your biggest concern and it's, you're absolutely right. There's a lot of, when restaurants start out, there's some investment sometimes. There's plenty of places that get sold that are fully stocked and the new people walk in, they do some capital improvements, but not usually the equipment. You've been to the course, you know, we've had to do, or there's considerable amount of work to be done there to get it what it needs to be. So we're looking to make sure that that happens. Obviously, you know, we do have, we know a lot of people around the counties and cities so that we do have a good reputation with them and we always make it right. So whatever your decision is, you know, we're here to make things fair. We certainly, you know, we we look at making a business grow so that that two percent, the way we figured, is actually more than we originally proposed in the RFP when it goes back to the city as revenue to the city.
It is, it is two percent of gross, not two percent of profit.
Correct, yes.
So there's a huge difference in those numbers as well.
Right. The money that that we anticipate coming into the city will far exceed what the previous vendor had. And actually, by our estimate estimations, will actually exceed what our original RFP was. So when it was renegotiated, it's actually beyond what was awarded.
Thank you. Were there any other questions that you guys had for us that we could help as well?
Question, as far as the equipment that you're putting in, who will own that after the term of the lease?
The city.
Yeah, so we actually, yeah, we were responsible. The reason originally we would discuss of having a city, but then it'd be city responsibility. So we renegotiated it to where we own it and we're responsible for placement. And trust me, as example, Boca Golf and Racquet Club, they've had to put several thousand dollars back into just repairs of the equipment that was there. That's something the city will never have to worry about with us. Any other questions?
Anything else for my colleagues? Those were no's from my people on my left. Are we good? All right.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate you very much.
Thank you. Any final comments, Commissioner? This was your item.
No, just thank you all for for explaining and giving feedback and telling us what the what the cost is that you're paying at other locations. That's one of the questions I had during my agenda review and by our procurement manager, there was no data from before and that just seems very odd to me. I'm not used to that. We like to make database decisions and informed decisions. So now that I feel like we have a lot more information, I feel a lot more comfortable than I felt when I got here today. So thank you for your time.
All right, Vice Mayor, you said you made the motion to approve this item, which is six K. And who made the second?
Second.
There, there we go. Commissioner Kelly.
We had a, I didn't remember hearing.
Well, we have a second now.
Now we do.
All right, so.
Would you repeat the motion?
The motion is to approve item six K, which is to go ahead and award this five year lease to SW Hospitality Group LLC for the restaurant concession at the Links at Point Beach. All right, that's the motion. Vice Mayor, Commissioner Kelly made the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, say no. No. All right. Obviously, the motion passes. All right, thank you.
That's four to one?
That is four to one with my self dissenting. Congratulations. And as I said earlier, I thought thirty days more wouldn't have made too much of a difference. But all right, motion passes. Congratulations, everybody. Let's go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. We are moving on to consent bids and purchases over one hundred thousand. All right, are there any items under section seven that my colleagues would like to pull? Hearing none, may have a motion to approve the remainder, the entirety of consent bids and purchases. All right, the motion was from Commissioner Cruz. The second one was from Vice Mayor. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those who oppose, say no. The ayes have it. Motion passes unanimously. We're moving on now to public hearing. The first item under eight, eight A, Propose Ordinance Number twenty three dash zero zero nine. This is second reading, which means we'll have public comment on this item. This is towing services administrative charge. I'm going to turn now to our city attorney.
Mr. Mayor, I read the title, Ordinance Number twenty three zero zero nine in ordinance of the city of Point Beach, Florida, amended chapter fourteen entitled Regulatory Traffic Control by creating section fourteen dash five point one, tow services administrative charge, establishing an administrative charge for towing services provided for conflicts, survivability, codification, and an effective date.
All right, thank you, city attorney. From my colleagues, do you want to hear anything from staff on this item? Or do you have any questions, comments, discussion on this item before we proceed to public comment? Seeing none, let's proceed to public comment on this item. All right, public comment must be specifically an item eight A. If you would like to speak on this item, now is the time to approach the podium, after which we'll go to those online. Seeing no one, we're gonna go online. Amani, do we have anybody with their digital hands raised?
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised.
No hands raised, which means public comment on this item is now closed. If there's nothing else from my colleagues or the city, I'll accept a motion to approve item eight A.
Motion to approve.
There is a motion. Is there a second? Second? I'm not sure who said it. Commissioner Cruz, let's go ahead, city clerk for the roll call.
Commissioner Kelly?
She stepped out.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turkin?
Aye.
Mayor Penserga?
Yes.
In a roll call vote, the vote, the motion passed unanimously.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on to item eight B, proposed ordinance number twenty-three dash zero one zero. Second reading, historical designation of four thirteen Northeast Twelfth Avenue. This is a quasi judicial item. I'm going to turn now to our city attorney to read the item into the record, after which you can swear in the the relevant party.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to go ahead, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, and go ahead and read the the title in ordinance number twenty-three zero one zero in ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, designated the Meeks property located at four one three Northeast Twelfth Avenue, Boynton Beach, which is more fully described herein as a local historic site in the addition of this fourteen nineteen forty-one wood frame vernacular one-story single-family house to the city's local registry of historical sites, providing for non-servability clause and an effective date. And this is a quasi judicial item, which means that anybody who speaks in this item needs to be sworn in. So if you intend to speak on this item, please raise your right hand and I swear you in. Do you swear from the state? Thank you. Do you swear from the statements or testimony? Give the scene, they should be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Okay. The the items that are already in the record include the PowerPoint and the application and whatnot and any statements ever made at the first reading. At this time, usually you'd have an applicant present, create the burden. I understand the staff's going to present this item with the sworn testimony. If the applicant is here, they're able to provide any information they need to to supplement the information that's provided. But it's time to be appropriate to turn it over to staff and hear if the applicant's here, then you would hear from the public. Public has an opportunity to provide sworn testimony on this item. Generally, they get three minutes to speak at the conclusion of the public hearing. You turn it back over to staff and the applicant if they wish to address anything that's come up during the public portion of the hearing. And with that, once that, I'm sorry, once that is done, then it turn it over to the commission for a decision.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
If you could begin, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. My name is Jayon Kim with the Planning and Zoning. This is a second hearing, nothing has been changed, but I'm here for any, if you want me to present item, I'm here for that. Also, I'm here for any questions.
All right. Can I just recommend, I'm sorry, this is the quasi judicial hearing, so I would say just give a brief synopsis of the of the application, how it meets code and brief, and it's supported by the materials that are in the record, just so it's on the record.
So this is, as I explained, presented the last time, this is one of the properties that is requesting for the local designations. Just to go over with, this is a local destination requested by Martha Light Mix, actually Dr. Martha Light Mix. She presented the mix of family. The property is located at four one thirty Northeast Twelfth Avenue. This house is a wood frame vernacular building built in nineteen forty-one. Per the family record, it is the mixed family owned since nineteen ninety-six and ownership of the property has been retained with the family since it was built. The property consists of one of a fiber remaining structures built in nineteen forties within the nineteen twenty-five subdivision of Happy Home Heights, which is a historical subdivision in the city. The the house style is a shotgun house, generally consists of a gable front porch and then two or more rooms laid out in a straight line. That's a unique feature about the disa house. To qualify the historical destinations, the individual property must have a significance in American history, architecture, archaeology, engineering or culture, possess integrity of the location, design, settings and materials, workmanship and fillings and associations. Based on the criteria, on April tenth, Historic Preservation Board of Resource recommended approval of this local designation of a four one three Northeast Twelfth Avenue. That concludes my presentation. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone here from the property?
We do not. She she attended the last time and then she's not attending this time.
All right, which means we're going to go into public comment. All right, if you would like to speak on this item, specifically on this item, if you would, please approach the podium now, make it known.
Mayor?
Yes.
The son of Dr. Martha Meachlight just walked in, Victor Norfus. I don't know if he would be able to answer.
Well, he he does have the opportunity now as well as again later after.
Victor, would you come? We're discussing the historical of one twelfth avenue. How's that for timing, huh?
Sir, I assume this is the second reading?
Yes, one second. You need to be sworn in by our council. Go ahead.
Sir, I do. I just explained that as a second reading, quasi judicial hearing, all testimony, everything's taken under oath. And so 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 you're going to respond to some questions. I would like to swear you in for that there and state your name and address when you get done. Do you swear from the statements or testimony? Give the scene, they should be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? I do. Hey, thank you, sir.
Okay, my name is Victor Norfus. I live at two twenty-five Northwest Sixth Avenue, Boynton Beach, Florida. I'm a family member of the Meeks House. I just walked in the door, so I'm not quite sure where where you're at. Okay.
We literally just started. We heard from the staff presentation on the designation of this location and and then we turn it over to the property.
Okay, well, a brief history, I guess, of the Meeks House goes back to the nineteen hundreds. As you all know, there is a Meeks quarter, I guess, or district from Eleventh Avenue all the way to Seacrest and parts of Pointiana is also on Ed Meeks property. Meeks House is actually my grandfather, Ed Meeks was the elder. So George was actually born here in Boynton Beach and he grew up here. That was Juanita was his second wife. His first wife actually was the Roberts. And that used to be the property that was on tenth. And that was where his first son, Joe Meeks, owned that property. And he rented to mostly males, but he also served in World War Two. The house that under question, I believe there were eleven kids born under there. My grandmother was very active in the community. She served on many boards and many, actually the community choir back during segregation time. She's helped with Lena Remming and during the founding of the Head Start Center. And is very active throughout the community. She even has a chapter named after her, the Juanita Meeks Order of Eastern Star, which is in Boynton Beach, Florida. So there's a lot of history. I really not was prepared to give anything, but thanks for giving me that opportunity.
Thank you. All right, so we've heard from staff, we've heard from the property representative, we are now turning to public comment. All right, state your name for the record.
Good evening, Barbara Reedy. I chair your Historic Resources Preservation Board. We are in complete support of this designation. I just wanted to clarify a question that Commissioner Kelly had asked at the first reading about the benefits of being placed on the the local register. It's basically an honor. There, we have no funding to give grant money to help anyone fix anything. We've had discussion on our board with regard to joining up with the CRA possibly and, you know, their programs, their fix-up programs and being able to utilize some of that funding. As far as the tax exemption, there is an ad valorem tax exemption, but it only pertains to improvements made upon the property. So if the property was valued at a hundred and fifty thousand and someone wanted to sink a hundred thousand into it, they would get a ten-year tax exemption on that hundred thousand increase. So I just wanted to clarify that. That was a very good question. Did y'all have any questions for Victor or me? No? Good. Thank you. And I was sworn in.
All right, thank you. Next person on the podium. Again, specifically on this item of the historical designation of four thirteen Northeast Twelfth Avenue.
Hi, Susan Oyer, and yes, I swore in. I I just wanted to share that this is an endeavor worth going forward with. This is an amazing piece of Boynton Beach history. The Meeks family has been here forever. I fully support them. I I know them well. And I was delighted to learn from Mrs. Meeks a little bit of Boynton history that none of us knew about, including myself until, you know, within the last year. It she called me up one day and said, Susan, your dad provided financing for our house when we bought it because banks wouldn't give black people loans. And and we started talking about dates and she told me the date that, you know, the family had passed around like that can't pass possibly be my daddy would have been like a freshman in high school. And so we eventually figured out it was my grandfather. He was giving African Americans in the community loans to buy houses back before the banks would do that. And that's just kind of a weird, and not that I'm trying to promote my family anyway, it's just kind of a weird neat tidbit of trivia for Boynton Beach. And I would have never known if Mrs. Meeks hadn't told me she is a treasure in herself. I mean, maybe we should look at making her, you know, a historical person and and, you know, for our city, maybe we should be doing something like that because she's a really amazing woman. I've been blessed to have many conversations with her about a variety of topics. And I encourage you all to get to know her and and talk to her because she is a treasure trove of wonderful stories about all the families in this city. And I was excited to learn a piece of my family's history and you never know what you might learn yourself. So go have a chat with her. And I know Commissioner Kelly, your family's been around for a very long time as well here in the county, so you might learn something too. Thank you very much, but please vote for this. This is what a wonderful opportunity we have here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else on this item, specifically on this item?
Yeah, I'd like to point out something. I just keep seeing.
Please state your name for the record.
Thomas Jerry Thibodeau is my birth name, but nature is what I go by. That's the fit's me best, but I am the owner of the plantation. Jesus succeeds the writing for his last day in hell. Thousand-year rain it started. The that house, I just came from St. Augustine, Florida. Okay, and this, I've I've got a proposal for them to restore that house where they actually petrify the wood. You take it apart, piece by piece, and number all the parts and soak it in clay water. And then wrap it aluminum foil and put in the coal of fire. I've created campfire out there, have a whole bunch of coal, hickas, and wherever, pull some of the ground, put that wood in the ground and put coal over top of it. It will actually petrify.
We thank you for your suggestion.
That house.
That is about the historical designation of the house.
Yeah, what I'm saying is that that would be probably more, but that would be great significance for mankind to be able to soak building like that. This house would be the first start of it. There are also that property, you could you could actually tell them that use that property to 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 connect the cities, citizens of the city and teach, to have things, have projects going there. So have a little, have a little, what's it called? Per se on how they're going to use the money, you know, and and give the, give the, the I mean, if you're going to give money for it, you're just, you're just talking about a designation right now, I guess, but.
All right, thank you. Anybody else in the room would like to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, we're going to go online. Mani, how many do we have with their digital hands raised?
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised.
All right, hearing that, public comments on this item is now closed. We're going to turn back now to staff, followed by the representative of the property, if there are any additional comments to be to be made. None from staff, anything, anything from the property representative? No, that was a no. So let's turn now to the commission. Do any of you have any questions for staff, comments?
Yeah.
Yes, Commissioner?
I saw move that.
Second.
Resolution point three dash zero one zero.
Excellent. We have a motion from Commissioner Hay. I heard a second if I'm Vice Mayor Cruz. We're going to turn now to the city clerk, if you could please begin.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Turkin?
Yes.
Mayor Penserga?
Yes.
In a roll call vote, the motion passed unanimously.
Excellent, and congratulations to the Meeks family. We're now moving on to item eights, did I skip one? Nope. Eight C, proposed ordinance number twenty-three dash zero one one. It is a first reading. Normally, we don't have public comments during first reading. However, council assures me, given the nature of this topic, it's a public hearing, we will have public comments. This is amendments to the Land Development Regulation for Car Washes and Indoor Training Facilities, city attorney.
Mr. Mayor, I read ordinance twenty-three zero zero, I'm sorry, zero one one in ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending the land development regulations, chapter one, article two, definitions, chapter three, article four, section three, use regulations, and chapter four, article five, minimum off-street parking requirements provided for complex survivability codification and effective date. And the reason this requires two public hearings is one of the ones in the statute that requires that as this is changing the list of permitted uses in the zoning code.
All right, so the way we'll proceed, we'll hear from staff. If anybody in my my colleagues here have any questions, ask them immediately thereafter, after which we will go to public comments and this will be three minutes per person and then we'll turn back to the dais. All right, so if you could please begin.
Should we do a swearing in before I begin?
It's not.
I can swear you in if you'd like, though.
Just posterity.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Andrew Meyer, Senior Planner, and I'm presenting code amendments for car wash and indoor athletic instruction slash training facility uses. Next slide, Mani. This code amendment includes changes to car wash uses, including modifications to definitions, use standards and parking requirements for detail areas. It also includes the expansion of indoor athletic instruction and training facilities to the rec zoning district as an accessory use. Next slide. So so first, the definitions of auto slash car wash detailing, polishing, waxing and detailing and auto slash car wash self-serve bay uses were clarified to reduce ambiguous language. The auto car wash polishing, waxing, detailing use was updated to include use subtypes, including full service and fully automatic types. This was done to reflect changing trends in the car wash industry and to help clarify the unclear language currently present in the code, which distinguishes the suit to subtypes. Second, the use standards for both polishing, waxing and detailing and self-serve bay car wash uses were updated to require all business activities to occur under a fully or semi-enclosed building or underneath an insulated roof structure. Space for a customer to polish or vacuum their own vehicle for the full-service subtype of car wash will not be required under, to be under a roof. The currently existing use standards were also clarified and made less ambiguous. The city experienced a lot of confusion from the public regarding these use standards, so they were made to read better. Finally, the number one, the number of required parking spaces for detailing washing and waxing areas was reduced from one space per seventy-five square feet to one space per two hundred square feet of detailing area, so less parking required. For example, a detail area to accommodate approximately five cars would require about sixteen additional parking spaces under our current parking requirements. The proposed code amendments of one space per two hundred square feet would instead require about six additional parking spaces for the five detailing areas, basically assuming about one point two employees per detailing space. Next slide. All right, you're there. Thanks.
Can you go, can you guys go back? Sorry. Can you guys go back just one slide because I was trying to read the thing and then it just changed.
All right. What's not changing is, and I just wanted to go over what's not changing, in addition to what I was just discussed, which is changing. What's not changing is it's important to identify what is not changing. The car wash uses are not being expanded to any new zoning districts, nor are they being removed from any exist, existing zoning districts where they are currently allowed. All car wash uses will remain as conditional uses and will continue to be subject All car wash uses will remain as conditional uses and will continue to be subject to the conditional use process, which requires hearings at the Planning and Development Board and City Commission. Next slide. The other part of this proposed amendment includes expanding outdoor athletic instruction slash training facilities as an accessory use to the recreation zoning district. The use will be subject to footnote twenty-one, which only allows this use to be established on city-owned and operated park facilities. Properties that are zoned rec that are not city-owned and operated park facilities will not be eligible to establish this use. Next slide. Currently, the code permits other uses as accessory use within the rec zoning district. These include uses such as arts and crafts, music, group pubs, novelty stores, restaurants, studios and more. Next slide. All right. This concludes my presentation. Myself, as well as Amanda Radigan is available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Let's turn now to the commission for any questions or comments. Anybody, can we, do you have any? Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
I just wanted to know, maybe I didn't hear, but did P and D have any conditions of approval on this one?
No, there were no conditions of approval at the P and D hearing.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kelly?
I have just one question on the car wash end of it. And I just, how, if at all, does this affect? Because I see the amendments adding coverage and things like that. How does this affect, if at all, mobile car washes? And are they, does this ordinance affect somebody who runs a mobile car wash? Are they going to be required to have to somehow cover what they're doing or does that?
Thank you for that question. Hello. Yes, thank you for that question. This would not impact mobile car washes. Mobile car washes are regulated under our mobile vending units.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, not right now.
Anybody, anything from Vice Mayor or Commissioner Cruz? Go ahead. Yeah.
Can we go to slide three, please?
Many?
I think it's the next slide, Manny. Yeah, that one.
Thank you. Okay, so. So where he reads, "Space for customer to polish or vacuum their own vehicle for the full-service subtype of car wash will not be required to be under a roof." Does that mean that there will not be protection from the sun in the areas where people are vacuuming their cars? Is that currently required and why is it not being required anymore?
Thank you for that question. Currently, there are no design standards around car washes, so these are new. Where we took these standards is to require them for employees. So for the full-service portion, if people are going to be working in the sun for prolonged hours, we're also making sure that those are hard roofs, not fabric roofs for maintenance purposes. The idea was to not be overly onerous. If someone is coming to do it just for their car, we are not requiring it to be shielded from, from the elements. However, we will always ask for it, but it is not currently required.
Okay, I can tell you that I don't like that because we live in Florida. We have ninety-plus degree weather and being under the sun for even ten minutes alone can be dangerous, depending on the time of day.
Sure. Absolutely. And what we, what we could do, because there are different types of requirements. So we were very stringent under the employee since they're are there for prolonged times, hard roofs, insulated roofs. What we could do is include an amendment that would require shelter. So it could be fabric awnings for something, because a lot of these spaces are also floating in the middle of parking areas. So it'll make it a little bit harder to design if it's attached to the building or if it's an insulated roof. So we could propose something that includes covering, but not as stringent as the employee parking, if that's.
Not like a hard roof, but something to protect.
Yes, for shade.
From the sun, for shade. Yes. Okay, yes. I, if we were to move forward with this, I would like to add that amendment. Because we do live in Florida, it is really hot and being out in the sun, sometimes it takes ten minutes, twenty, thirty, depending on how dirty your car is. And I would like to make sure that the people that go there are protected from the sun. And even if it's raining, if it's raining and there's no insulation or no protection or sort of roof, even if it's temporary, then they wouldn't be able to do their vacuum and it would also negatively affect the business.
Yes, I fully understand. It was also an attempt to be more in line with what we saw in other cities. These are pretty unique to have design standards for car washes, but I absolutely understand your comment.
Thank you so much. And then.
One second, Commissioner, before we move on and before we hear any other questions, let's just address what you just said. Do we have support to make that amendment?
Yes, I would, but I would also add, like the fabric, I think that could be a hurricane nightmare. So I think we need to look at, like, hurricane preparedness for this, with the type of roofing that we're going to add in there. But I definitely agree with Commissioner Cruz.
All right. So anything else specifically on what Commissioner Cruz brought up? And then we'll come back to your other questions and comments. Commissioner Kelly?
I guess my concern is where do we draw the line with that? Because, and what qualifies or quantifies the space for a customer to polish or vacuum their vehicle? We're talking about, I mean, I know that this revolves around the car wash aspect, but then does that open us up to then requiring this at a gas station, vacuum station, at a, a gas station that has a car wash affixed to it, that has a vacuum station? Are, does this, are we now opening up where we're going to, we're going to require more businesses to put coverage over areas where somebody might jump out, vacuum their car? So although I, I mean, I, when I take my car to the car wash, I run it through the station. I sit in it and wait for it to finish. So I'm not vacuuming my own, per se. And I don't know if many car washes even offer a vacuum station, per se, on these full-service areas, you know, as opposed to the bays where, which I don't, I don't even know that we have any, any more in Boynton Beach. I know that we did on Federal Highway where we had, at the bay, you go in, you wash, you move to another station, you vacuum so somebody else can drive in and wash their own car. So those are my two concerns. My one concern really is, are we opening ourselves up to all kinds of issues by requiring coverage over a vacuum station when they're at gas stations with car washes built in? So that's my first concern. And then my second is, in these full-service car washes, do we see areas where customers are, you know, is, for instance, we have one that is why this is, is on the, on the agenda. Do they even have that or is this just being put in place because we're making changes? And so that's why this is being added.
So best practice, we do not design our code amendments around proposals. So this is best practices and done through a review of car washes as a whole, our existing regulations and other municipalities. So the automatic car washes that go through, like the, the only automatic tunnels would not be covered under this. Those are only required as accessory to a gas station. So this regulation, the way it's written in the code, would, would only regulate the two other types, which would be full service for employee detailing and then full service employee, like the tunnel and self-service for detailing. So I don't think that we could run into a situation. We obviously do not want this to be something that is used in, in gas stations. I don't think that's the intent. We'll take another run through the code to make sure that I am, that we're, you know, that we are not causing that. Because I don't think that that would be the intent either.
Thank you. Yeah, those were my concerns.
All right. Anything else specifically on this subtopic of coverage? Anything else on this? Otherwise, we'll entertain. All right, let's go to other topics, questions. Vice Mayor, go ahead. Commissioner, you want to circle back to that?
Sorry, last thing. Just, what we could do is we could add a line, like, underline, just say this would not include gas station car washes so that we can be very crystal clear. Because I do agree with you. I didn't think about gas stations because I was thinking of full-service car washes. But we don't want to create, put the onus on a gas station to do such a thing because it's not like a full-service car wash. I did have a, sorry, I'm ready to move on to the next item.
Okay. So Commissioner Kelly, how do you feel about what she just said? Would that?
I think that's what Amanda had said. I'll make sure that it's clear. They're, they're regulated differently in the code. So we can reference that to make sure that that's not happening. Absolutely.
Right. And so this really just applies to if, for some reason, a full-service car wash comes in and they're going to have a little station or bay for you after you go through the tunnel and get your car washed, that instead of having their staff do it for you, you pull in a different area and you polish with your own polish and vacuum with, I guess, their vacuum, that they would have to provide some sort of coverage.
Yeah. So typically, we'll see, we don't necessarily see polish, but we will see them set up with vacuums, rags, spray cleaners to detail in general after you go through the tunnel.
Okay, sounds like you're coming back. All right. Other questions?
So.
Okay.
How popular are these? Because from, from a perspective of like, we're building our city. What do we want to have? You know, do people favor more the ones that are self-service? Because it appears that some people might or might not favor that versus the full service where you just walk in and you get your car washed. I mean, obviously, it's up to the market, but from, from, in regard to like data that we have, or do we have any data to discern whether?
I would say sometimes we bring these code amendments really following inquiries. And I would say car washes right now are wildly popular. We get a lot of inquiries for car washes. And they're regulated by conditional use, so there, there isn't necessarily a plethora of areas for them to go into. So they, we do get a lot of inquiries on them. Just from, you know, being a consumer, I, I would see that I have noticed that the self-service detailing and the automatic tunnel is also extremely popular. And they are generally much less expensive than the full tunnel and detailing. So yes, I do, I do think that both are popular. And I will say in a review of what we've seen, because we did do some scouring on what's built in kind of the neighboring area, we have seen gas stations that are both covered and not covered for the self-service portion.
I guess my question was just like, what's, what's more popular, what's more attractive, what's better? I guess either way, it could just go, depending on the consumer.
Right. I think that we get a lot of inquiries for the automatic tunnel and self-service portion. That's where our inquiries are geared to right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. That was more than I expected. Any other questions on what's been presented? Any other subtopics? Commissioner Cruz?
I have to ask. Within a, let's say a standard car wash, the change from seventy-five square feet to two hundred. I mean, I don't want to throw an estimate out there, but what's a standard size for a car wash? Like a.
I'm sorry, size of what?
What would be like a standard size for a car wash? And how many parking spaces are we talking about that we would be losing with the change in seventy-five versus two hundred?
I think size of the, the required, the required, so this is a requirement for one space for seventy-five square feet. And we want to change that. What you're proposing is one space per two hundred feet. The question is, what's the standard that we've seen, right?
I can ask my own question. Thank you so much.
So let me, let me see if I could. I just want to make sure that I understand the question too. So what we are actually changing right now, we park detailing area. So any areas that are used for detailing, we're parking at one per seventy-five square feet. That is a lot of parking. The most, you know, the highest standards for parking are usually like restaurants and they're parked at one to one hundred.
Okay.
So it's a lot of parking, considering that the cars that are onsite are usually the ones being detailed. So the core of requiring parking for a detailing area is usually geared towards your employees. You want to make sure that at its peak times on weekends, that we have enough parking for as many cars as they could fit in a detailing area.
Understood. I think that's, I think I'm good. Thank you.
I have just one more thought about parking. The one to two hundred comes from the space required for a parking space. So the theory is that a parking space is about ten by twenty. It's one space per, per car. So we at least have one employee per each car being, being detailed.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. How about we turn to public comment now? We can always continue the discussion after public comment. As always, three minutes per person. After all those in the chambers have spoken, we'll, we'll go to those online. So if you would like to speak specifically on this item, please approach the podium now. And we do have two of them. Begin by stating your name and I'll begin the timer when you start.
Good evening. My name is Vic Monteleone. I'm, I am the president of Mint Eco Car Wash. We have a property that we're working on in Boynton Beach at twenty-two fifty Wilbright. And we've been trying to get a car wash in Boynton for about three years, worked on another project, but that didn't work out. But we're on to this project. We own this piece of land and we want to develop it. We've been talking with staff about some of these, these critical amendments relative to parking and then the structure. And we just wanted to request that we consider a few minor tweaks to the language. Should I wait till everything's passed out?
No, keep going.
Okay. So specifically relative to the structure and the canopy piece that we're talking about relative to a, a solid structure, we typically have used historically at our, at our current locations, a fabric canopy. And what we're asking for is that you just consider language such as it being more of a permanent structure. I think the spirit of what they're trying to accomplish makes a ton of sense, where you don't want something that's not very substantive, right? So ours are very robust hurricane-proof canopies, but we do use a fabric roof, you know, on them. Really, so when our canopies are rated one hundred twenty miles an hour, when we get into a, you know, a heavier grade hurricane, we want to remove those. And the way that we've built them is that we can remove them and then put them right back up after, you know, so they, they look good right away versus, you know, a massive canopy system that we have to wait for a vendor to come in six to eight weeks later after they've been stressed with the hurricane. So that is our goal there. Relative to the parking, proposed, you know, rules around the parking. So our car wash is a hybrid. What you guys were talking about a few minutes ago are the self-serve washes, which are low staff, three to four staff members, and that's it. And the customers do everything themselves. They go through the automated system. They can vacuum and they can leave. We have a hybrid. It's called a flex wash. What I think that historically everyone believes or considers is the, is the typical full-service car wash, which was very common in Florida for many years. Those have thirty-five to forty employees and I get that we need a lot of parking. Because we're a hybrid, we're actually a self-serve car wash that offers interior cleaning, right? So the person that does prefer us to do that for them, we offer that service on a very quick basis, right? So what we're proposing at our, at our site, we would have roughly ten to fifteen self-serve free vacuums, which, you know, typical to what you're talking about with an express. But in the area where we want to do our full service, we need to have space available beyond the two hundred square foot of space for a typical car. Oh, my time's up?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Now, I'd like to, if you have another representative, another person with you that could continue. But I am sticking with the rules. Three minutes per person.
Bonnie Miskel here on behalf of Menaco, just to close that comment. So the way, and we, we have a picture for you and you'll see an orange space and then you see crosshatched around it. As you might expect, when an employee is cleaning a car, the doors are wide open. Part of their body is hanging out of the car. So a ten by twenty space doesn't give you the flexibility to keep your doors wide open so that you have that space to move around. Furthermore, in between the vehicles, in between the spaces, there is area for carts that have the cleaning products, the wax, the soap, the cloth, all the things. The vacuum, in fact, some of them have vacuums that are built into the pillars, the columns themselves. So a typical space may be ten by twenty for the car itself, but you need gaps in between it. What we did, to, to close quickly, we're going to work with your staff because they may be interpreting that the space is the space. It is only the space. It is not that area in between the cars where the carts are kept and the materials are kept, but it's the space itself. And in that event, we're fine. We don't need to talk about that. So we'll come back maybe to the second meeting if we can't work things out with staff. But we've had conversations already and we will continue the dialogue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other in-person public comment speakers specifically on this item?
My birth name is Thomas Jerry Thiebeau, but I am the owner of this plantation. Uh, I I was engrossed uh, March the twentieth, twenty twenty at approximately two forty-seven. And North St. Augustine was the epic center. Worldwide, I was accepted and deemed owner of the plantation.
On this item.
Owner of the plantation, check it, check it, time and date. Yeah, this uh, what what they were saying about the roof and what uh, I don't remember who was commenting about the roof, about hurricanes. But um, what are you saying about uh, being able to take it down? Right? Um, it'd be easier to make a roll or rolls, rolls, rolls down. Uh, because this is in Florida also, make use of the sun, make use of the the area. So this would be a good opportunity to show the potential of a screen. Of a screen, two different wires, you actually use the screen as a solar cell. And you collect electricity. Two different types of wires, both encoded and they they, like you said, they act as a solar cell. But um, they have a canopy over top of the, over top of the screen and it rolls, rolls back. So it's easy to take off because right here in Florida, it'd be taken off three, three times during hurricane season. You know, taking off the canopy. So um, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Susan Oyer, Boynton Beach, um, question, how is this going to impact the car wash out at the mall that's been there for what, about twenty years? I mean, are they grandfathered in? How is this going to impact them? I mean, when I drive by, they have like a, you know, like a regular tent thing like we put out for the city events. So um, has anyone talked to them? That would be my question. And they've been there for years and years and years. So that might be a discussion, not that I'm against new car washes coming in, but maybe we should, you know, not destroy the business of the one that's already there. So I would suggest you look at them. And my other thing is it's not being discussed, but how this is going to impact that hideously awful baseball nonsense you guys are bringing towards our Little League fields. Um, you're not even mentioning that, and that's what this is really undercover about, as we all know. So you're you're not even discussing that point of this. You you guys are looking to put, take out our beautiful Little League baseball fields, and I am very anti-baseball. I'm the first one to say so, but you know, this Little League serves a purpose and it's a great thing for our city. And you're you're putting this, you're selling our, off our land and basically giving it away for this company to come in and build this baseball thing.
Susan, relevance to this item?
Yes, it is, because this is about indoor athletic things. And that's what you're putting over there is an indoor athletic thing. So I am on topic. As you know, I talk on topic, Ty. Now, you, it's already a disaster for parking over there. What are you doing with all those trees that you have recently planted? There's a ton of Florida slash pines there. Are you ripping those out to put in this indoor facility and the associated parking? What are you doing? Because you're not talking about any of this. And yet this whole thing applies to that baseball thing that you guys are putting in that I'm against and everyone I know is against. So um, you know, why aren't we addressing the elephant in the room, which is the baseball field into this? Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on now to next speaker. No outbursts, sir. No outbursts.
Good evening.
Please begin.
Yes, sir. Barbara Reidy, um, I wanted to share with you that I did attend the planning and development meeting where this item was brought up. And the planning, your planning and development board uh, decided that it was odd that two disparate topics were lumped together into one thing. And they separated them out and passed the car wash thing just fine. But they had questions about the indoor training facility. And as they did request that um, more information be brought back to them with regard to what this pertained to. Um, I would hesitate to support this simply because I don't feel that the city has done their due diligence on the indoor training facility. There's an awful lot of questions. Um, financial questions, uh, the character of the people involved. So I would hesitate to continue to lump them together. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Anything else in person? All right, um, anybody online?
Mr. Mayor, we do have a single hand raised.
All right, and who is that person? And please go ahead and unmute them.
Person is Phil Toronto. Phil, you've been unmuted, but you're self-muted. Please click the microphone next to your name. Phil, please click the microphone next to your name to speak. One more time.
One final time. All right, we don't hear anything. Um, I'm going to say that's a no-show or a no response. Ms. Radigan, I see you're back at the podium. Public comments, by the way, are now closed. Ms. Radigan, did you want to respond to any of those items? You're here.
I I'm available to respond to some of them if you would like me to.
Yes, I've already, I figured that's what you were doing.
I I am able to. A couple of the things that we heard, I I would like to address. It is very typical for us to lump like areas when we bring amendments forward. Meaning you would see amendments from the city that include the entire use matrix. So if we're doing use changes, we do tend to lump them together. It's for a very practical reason. When we do these types of amendments, they do require ads and those ads are expensive. So I like to lump the titles together and publish them one by one. Any board or any commission can separate and vote on parts of the ordinance if they so choose. So I wanted to to put that out there just because I feel like that was stated a few times. Um, other than that, I did uh, have the opportunity to take a look at um, I'm sorry, I forgot the general's name, but their representatives for Mint Eco. We did uh, think about the parking uh, as they have it laid out, which would be per stall instead of per area. That generally I feel is not, it is not as all-inclusive as doing it per area. If we design a space, like for example, even on their slide, they show a hatched area. They are showing five cars that are being utilized now. On Saturdays, they could fit up to ten cars. So it's it's why we are covering area, not necessarily bays. Uh, unless we add requirements that add strict bays, like parking spaces, it becomes more of an operational issue than a zoning issue. So for us, I think it is um, easier to regulate and and leave the operations to it afterwards. We are estimating that we are asking for one point two per car that would be able to fit in that area. But uh, other than that, the uh, the structure comments that we heard, a permanent structure, that would be again, a policy decision on how we want to move forward. If we would be okay in allowing fabrics and we are happy to change that to permanent structure. Uh, we are asking for hard roofs. I think the word even insulated, yeah, an insulated roof is in there right now. And I'm available to answer any questions.
All right, Vice Mayor, I see you have your hand up.
I don't really have any questions. I I do like the idea of maybe separating them. Just for clarification, on the site of this car wash, it is not at the Little League field. It's at twenty-two fifty from the twenty-two fifty Wilbright Road, which is just south of Leisureville. Just to get that on the record. It's not over there by the Little League field.
Absolutely. So both of these amendments are code amendments not related to specific sites. They obviously do impact car washes that are coming into site and uh, uses will impact uh, property. Uh, but these are not specific to sites. So if I plan for
But we had someone publicly speak on this that wants to develop a site that would benefit from if this moves forward or doesn't move forward, correct?
Yes, but the their site plan will come, will go through whatever process it would need to be approved at that time.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
I mean, just to respond, um, I did also question during my agenda review, but since I had already questioned, I'm not going to do it twice. But I did question during my agenda review why those two items that were not really relevant to each other were put together. And the reasoning was that the advertising, it's costly and we're trying to save taxpayer dollars. But in the time of voting, we could always like, again, separate the two. Can you dig a little bit deeper into the the rec part of it? Because we've talked a lot about the car wash. But can you, can you just explain one last time what it is that this is changing? Is it affecting parking, the parking situation at rec facilities or is it not?
So the only amendment in front of you regarding indoor facilities is allowing those facilities as accessory within rec zoning. So this is an established use within the zoning districts, within the zoning code, and rec is an established zoning district. We currently do allow several uses as accessory to parks. So this is how we allow things like concession stands to be put in. All all types of things, things like uh, selling certain things at like dock marinas or anything that would be accessory to a park. Uh, we already allow those types of uses within the code as accessory. All this does is include indoor training facilities as one of the permitted uses accessory to a rec facility.
And that only the city government can do that and no public entity can do that, correct? That's what I read.
The park has to be run by the city, correct?
Um, so if there were ever to be any questions in regard to parking for the Little League specifically, that would come back to commission and that would not be?
Uh, so any, any site plans would go through either a minor or a major process, depending on what the proposal is, correct?
Okay, so I just, just wanted to get on the record that we're not discussing parking for the Little League right now.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Motion to approve.
Might as well, I mean, I'm already here.
Sir.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion, Commissioner Kelly? I see your hand is up. Go ahead.
Yeah, um, yes, um, Amanda, with regard to um, the requirement for uh, permanent structure coverage. I know you briefly said that what you're proposing is an insulated cover. That's not what other car washes in our city currently have. So, you know, Motor City has a a permanent structure that's covered. So I guess why the proposal to make it more stringent or more difficult?
So anything that is currently approved and operating would not be affected by this amendment. They would be legally non-conforming, depending on what type of revisions they would like to make to their site. They may need to come into conformance with portions of the code. The desire to upgrade uh, some of the um, some of the roof structures came from a a few different thoughts. One being that it's more visually appealing. We are getting these proposals on main roadways. Maintenance purposes, a lot of these fabric type things are awful maintenances. Like Vice Mayor said, during hurricanes, a lot of them come up depending on the materials chosen by um, by the the operator. So this proposal removes some of those issues that we have had with car washes in the past. There may be, and you know, we're happy to work with uh, with Mint Eco and other operators. If there is a way, I don't, I'm not sure permanent structures is enough, but maybe it's not an insulated roof also. If there are certain materials that we can require, I would just say that I'm not a subject matter expert and an insulated roof is part of a typical requirement we ask for with buildings. So an insulated roof and designed like the building is something that we typically ask for.
Yeah, I just think that in this case, with it being a car wash, I think the insulated roof is maybe a little bit much. So I would like for you to look into that, you know. I know Mint Eco is all, is very sustainable, friendly. And so I'm sure that they're all about, you know, white, using white and using things that are going to help people stay cool and the environment. And so I'm sure that they can come up with something. And then also with regard, I will talk about the indoor athletic, because I have a couple of questions, but I have one more question with regard to parking at the car wash. What um, we were provided with documentation of some uh, neighboring cities and what they, and what their code requires. And I'm just wondering with, have you looked into that because we have a parking issue at some of our car washes? So we know that this has, is an issue and those car washes get grandfathered in. So they don't have to fix their um, existing car problems or parking problems. So um, I guess I know that we're trying to make sure in an abundance of caution that, you know, on these busy roadways and areas that they're um, parking their employees. Um, but I also don't want to um, you know, force them to overpark. So have you, I guess, checked other neighboring cities and their codes?
Expensively.
I'm sure.
So Jayun actually just brought up a a very pretty developed spreadsheet on on all the cities that we looked at. I will say what you were provided only really talks about the tunnel requirement. We also have a specific tunnel requirement of four spaces. It is not mentioning any of the other requirements for detailing spaces or anything else that may be required of a car wash. So I do think some of the information that was provided to you may be limited. But it is not uncommon for us to get parking requirements for bays and and service areas also. And we saw a number of cities that are doing them. So I do think that they are generally in line with a lot of our our neighboring cities. And the second part of your question, yes, we do have several car washes, not several. We have a couple of car washes in the city that absolutely have parking problems and they have caused uh, traffic and safety issues and concerns that we have had to deal with. Those specific car washes are grandfathered in, so we are slowly bringing them further into compliance. Uh, and they're happy to do so. They've been long, long time businesses in the city. Uh, but we do still recognize that there are operational issues at those locations.
Okay, thank you. Can you explain with regard to the indoor athletic facility? This is making it just an accessory use. Correct, as opposed to it being of like it?
A principal use.
A principal use. Can you just explain the difference of those two, please, for the?
Absolutely. So a principal use is the, I I would translate as the main use of the property. The main use has to maintain recreation. Um, our use matrix allows for principal uses, accessory uses and conditional uses. Principal again is the main, the main use, A, which would be our accessory uses would only be allowed in conjunction within approved principal use. Um, and then conditional would include other means of approval that would have to be brought to the commission. So we allow it at this location if the city commission approves it. Those are the three levels of approval in the code.
Okay, do we? Do we have any? I guess because it's an indoor instruction, that's why we don't have anything like that now. But we do have accessory use buildings and other things on our park properties currently.
Yes, I'm not sure that it being indoor is the reason it hasn't been included because there are a few that are accessory currently that would require some indoor. So currently, uh, some of the uses that are accessory currently permitted as accessory within rec include an art book, craft, hobby, music, sporting goods and toy stores, restaurants, how we probably get concessions, photography studios, artist studios, indoor entertainment, uh, recreational rentals. So some of these do have prominent indoor facilities. Um, I'm I'm not sure why indoor training has not been included. Uh, it was probably just overlooked until there was a need to do something like this. I will say that um, Parks and Rec, the director of Parks and Rec does work with us pretty closely on ways to make sure we are maximizing use of our recreational facilities and ways to increase programming at those facilities.
Right, I mean, we're playing basketball and we're having games in our indoor facilities. So why hasn't this been in the, I mean, basically, how are we playing basketball in an indoor facility without having it be an accessory use? Okay, so this is another reason why we're clarifying and cleaning this up. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there any other further discussion? A motion has been made and I believe that was from Vice Mayor. If I'm not mistaken, I heard the second from Commissioner Hay. If there's nothing else, uh, City Clerk, please begin the roll.
Commissioner Kelly?
Well, can I, sorry, can we? So we, and so I, Amanda was going to look into some things, so are we just, this is first reading, so?
It's only first reading, it's not final.
Okay. Okay, thank you, yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Hi.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Turkin?
He stepped out.
And Mayor Penserga?
Yes.
In a roll call vote, the motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. We're going to move on now to the next item on the agenda, 11A. This is proposed resolution number R23-078. Purchase agreement and donation letter between the city of Boynton Beach and FDOT for 2191 North Seacrest Boulevard. I'm going to turn to our deputy city manager to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this item was brought before you as a resolution for a purchase and agreement and a donation letter between the city and DOT. Uh, we've been working with DOT since, actually before December, uh, for the last two years on the widening project over on Gateway in 95. They are doing, uh, expansion as well as additional storm drain, uh, retention areas in that vicinity of that interchange. So in order to do that, the DOT is looking to acquire additional land to, uh, to accommodate those new features. They have initiated an eminent domain process on this, with the city, uh, for our property at 2191 North Seacrest Boulevard. That's at the southwest corner of Gateway and Seacrest. Um, we, we started the process with DOT. As a part of that process, they do an initial notice and give us an offer. As a part of that offer, we ordered an additional appraisal to validate their purchase, their offer. Um, subsequently, we counter offered, uh, at our full appraisal price to DOT. And that brought us to today where they have countered back to us for a purchase price of $625,000 as well as reimbursing us the original cost of our appraisal. That is what's before you today. This would stave off an eminent domain process where we are initiating a, a purchase and sale agreement through the, through that. And it would not cause us staff to go through litigation with the DOT. All right. With that, I'm open to any questions you may have.
All right. Questions from the commission?
Yes, Andrew. Go back to that, uh, picture, pictorial showing the area. Uh, that, I believe that's, uh, on the left side there, that's north, northwest first court?
Yes, sir.
Is there any impact to that? Because the last time flooding got worse when they initially put all of that in. And now we're talking about modifying.
So this should improve actually the drainage in that area? Especially, I believe you're talking on the north side of, of, uh, Gateway?
On the north side, correct.
So as a part of this, they are actually improving and creating more storage around the interchange for drainage, for stormwater. So this will actually, should alleviate some of the drainage problems we have in this area.
Okay, uh, in particular, uh, the, the fraser.
Yes.
Probably there is right at the base there.
Correct.
Okay. And this will, uh, you know, improve that?
Yes, sir. Well, the purchase will, when they do the over, the interchange improvements, that'll ultimately fix the problem with, with the drainage in that area.
Okay.
Uh, one other thing I'd like to note, um, we do have a tenant in this building, uh, Boynton Beach Faith Bay CDC. Um, as a part of that, they will be getting relocation assistance and rent assistance through the eminent domain process. As well as we are asking DOT to allow them to remain post occupancy after closing. That would, uh, allow them to stay up to 30 days, um, prior to demolition of the building.
Are any other property, you talked about eminent domain. What particular properties are we speaking about? And, and that area?
As, as far as the ones in particular, we're talking about the one at 2191 or the additional ones in, I, I don't have that in front of me now, additional, uh, acquisitions they're doing in there. But this is particularly the city property.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Anything else from anyone? That was a no. I'm not hearing anything on my right. I'm, I'm going to turn now to public comment on this item. If you'd like to speak on item 11A specifically, now would be the time to approach the podium. Seeing no one, let's, is there anybody online?
Mr. Mayor, we have a single hand raised. I think Phil Toronto wants to give it one more shot.
However, that item has already passed. Mr. Toronto, are you speaking specifically on the FDOT item or the previous item?
Okay. Phil, you're self muted. Uh, please click the microphone next to your name to unmute yourself.
Sorry, Mr. Moon. I apologize. I, I didn't realize what I had clicked. I apologize. Good evening, everybody, though.
Good evening. Uh, not a problem. However, just FYI, if you're going to speak on the indoor training facilities item, we've already passed that. Okay.
No, I wouldn't. Speak at all.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And you, and you said that was the only one, Manny?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. So that means public comments are now closed. Any final comments or questions from my colleagues? Hearing none, may have a motion to approve item 11A.
A move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hay and a second from Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those who oppose say no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. We're now moving on to this newly added agenda item 11B, which is a discussion in our future meetings. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, it is, uh, July 6th is our currently fifth. Uh, we have it scheduled currently for July 5th. And, uh, staff informing that there's essentially very little on the agenda for that day. It's possible that we could roll those items over to the next regularly scheduled meeting and I wanted to gauge, and what is that date, by the way, the next regularly, the 18th? Just want to gauge all of you, if we were all comfortable, uh, with making that change.
Yes.
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 Okay. Counsel, do we need to publicly comment on this?
Technically, you should. Yes.
Okay. And then a formal motion? Okay, we'll do that. All right. If you'd like to speak specifically on the schedule change, now would be the time to approach the podium. Seeing no one, is there anybody online who would like to speak on the schedule change?
Mr. Mayor, we have no hands raised.
All right. Public comments on this item is now closed. Um, let's have that as a motion, please.
A move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, uh, that came from Commissioner Hay, second from Vice Mayor. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. The ayes have it, motion passes. All right. Okay. So now we're moving on to legal, item 12A, proposed ordinance number 23-012. It is a first reading, proposed regulation for short-term rentals. Again, first reading, so there is no public comment up until second, uh, second reading. So counsel, please read the item into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number 23012. In ordinance of the city commission for the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending the city of Boynton Beach code of ordinances, ordinances, excuse me, chapter two administration, article five code compliance board, special magistrate, amending chapter 13 licenses, article one business tax receipts and certificate of use and occupancy, amending chapter 13 licenses, article five rental dwelling units to rename and renumber the article, provided for conflict severability, codification and providing for an effective date.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rumpf.
Thank you. Uh, Mike Rumpf, for the record, um, representing planning and zoning staff. And then bringing this item back to you again, you recall that several months ago, there was an update on this. Some of the information may be repetitive. I'll, uh, move through those slides, um, summarizing them and their contents, not spending too much time on them. Saving more of the time into the details of the regulatory system that we're proposing for your consideration. Basically, um, taking into consideration was, uh, in, in our deliberations here and our due diligence and drafting up the ordinance had to do with reviewing other cities, statutory requirements, limitations, things of that nature. It also stopped me anytime you have a question on any of the slides or information we want to propose. And I'll try not to throw Manny off by moving around, try to keep in order. Manny, if you want to progress to the next slide. Again, I mentioned some more regulatory limits, um, things we cannot do, things that we can do in a regulatory system. And we've worked with the city attorney's office to make sure we're properly interpreting state statutes. Uh, we've also followed along. Like I said, we've taken a sample of other cities and what they do. Some of those cities are revising their ordinances, meaning their has, their regulations and system has been the books much longer. Uh, so we're trying to learn from best practices. Um, next slide. Speaking of that sample, who, some of the similarities of those that we reviewed, um, time period, how they define what a short-term rental is. And we were opting for the 30-day, um, time period. Uh, declaring a resident agent or local responsible party, as you have seen in our ordinance. All include maximum occupancy standards, although they may vary slightly. They require property inspections, whether it be annually and sometimes more frequently. And of course, they all restrict parking surfaces. Differences in some of the unique standards, Manny, next slide. Thank you. We point out some things from the sample of seven cities we reviewed. Three of them, almost half of them require hardwiring of smoke and carbon, carbon emissions sensors. Proximity or travel distance of the managing entity. In other words, it doesn't do much good if, if, if the owner is in Michigan and that's how they're overseeing their property versus requiring a local responsible party be designated for them for local oversight and monitoring the property as well as receiving notices from the city and violations and responding accordingly. Four of them differentiate between registered guests and visitors. One requires landline phone service and so on. Let's move to the next slide, please. Staff took a look also at other cities and how they, um, process the applications and the fees that they assess. We looked at those. And Phil's, our, ours are generally similar or within that range. And also anticipated to cover the extra costs that it will take to process such applications, including, uh, more details, the applications. The inspections are going to be more detailed based upon the requirements of the property and so forth. Uh, we have framed the regulatory system upon the general track record and some of the fears and anticipated issues that can result with significant turnover. Having less, oftentimes having less oversight of a managing entity. And, and that's how we have, like I said, we've listed in this, uh, bullets at next slide. We've listed here and we go into more detail of each of these general categories of, um, problem areas, if you will, nuisances and, and worse. Um, next slide. So the first one of that is, um, lack or careless oversight and management. And here are some of the bullets explain how ordinance is doing our best to address some of those. Where it's having a local responsible party, as I've already defined, um, requiring the obligations of the local responsible party, including visiting the property on an annual basis. Let me point out, and obviously it may be a thought of yours, it is, you know, how do we, how do we, um, administer this? How do we require such actions? And obviously, any of, many of our regulations, um, have that difficulty, but it's best to have them on the books. So that if there is a problem on the property, there's things that we can look to, say, are you doing this? And maybe even require them, if there has been repeat violations in that area. Maybe it's requiring a log, maybe it's frequent contacts with them, it becomes a problem property. We've got something on the books to hold it to. Um, I know it goes without saying, but I mentioned that. Compliance with city standards and codes, as you look at the ordinance, we've specifically pointed out certain, um, sections of our code. Uh, whether it's, uh, waste management, whether it's, um, noise, whether it's, um, parking and so forth, billing codes, things like that. And of course, city inspections are going to, um, confirm that the property is not in violation at the time of, of application. Next slide. Next category, noise and performance of the property. The biggest thing is obviously we know that, um, the number of people over a certain limit can then, um, create problem in and of itself. So like most ordinances that we've looked at in other cities, there are, uh, maximum number of persons that can be registered for the property as well as maximum that can be guests on a daytime basis. And we've called that like a gathering standard. We've got those in the code. Generally, it's two per room or bedroom plus two. And then magnify that times 1.5 or one and a half, and that gives us a maximum daytime occupancy. Now, uh, these are, and it's best to have performance standards. Cause we can't exactly say thou shall not have a party, thou shall not celebrate something, thou shall not do this. So these performance measures are intended to address it from different directions. The next one, the big one, obviously, is, is parking requirements. Strict parking requirement, stricter than what we hold other rental properties to, that are your annual rentals, uh, year-long or the single-family homeowner. Thou shall not park on the lawn, thou shall not park in the swale, thou shall not park over the sidewalk. So it's very strict, but it's intended again to allow the basic performance of the property for vacationers and things like that. But to prevent things from getting over a certain threshold and out of hand. We require the rules we posted for the occupant's awareness. Marketing of the property consistent with city regulations. And of course, the adult presence when there are, um, younger occupants in the property. Next slide. Uh, the next category would be traffic and vehicle parking. I began touching upon that with the parking standard. Uh, and not to mention that as well as the maximum occupants. We already have in our code, um, maximum area that must be retained on a lawn. So that you cannot necessarily just expand that parking area or your driveway to accommodate greater vehicles to get around that parking standard. We still have to maintain some logical front yard space that most single-family homes or properties have. We require as part of the application process, a sketch of the site as well as the floor plan to look at the number of bedrooms, look at the number of parking spaces that will be accommodated on the property to begin with as a benchmark. Next slide. Can excessive occupancy, that's obviously a, a strong point. I've already started mentioning the person's cap. Registered guests are documented in the lease, so upfront with the leases we have on record, um, the occupants. And also new to, to what I've just mentioned is a maximum penalty provision. And state law allows for declarations of something called irreversible or irreparable damage. And where the such potential exists, um, we can apply a maximum violation, uh, of $15,000. Also built into it, not listed here, is also deterrent, which is, um, someone going through the, the, um, could compliance process based on violations, they are not eligible for fee reductions. Also, um, now in the bullet is a whole unit rental requirement. Again, to regulate how many, yeah, the property. So you have to lease the property as a whole under one lease and not multiple leases under different bedrooms. Next slide. Course and really behavior. Worst-case scenarios, of course, I've heard of those. And actually, we had one case, I believe, in a recent pass at Wellington where there was a house party. Significant damage was done to the property. Of course, some of that occurred too. We went through the residential crisis and homes were vacant. They're in foreclosure and things got out of hand at that time. But again, uh, it's because they're, it was under a lease perhaps. And it was not very well regulated. Next slide. Property damage and personal injury. It's probably the thing that, um, is important to note here that uh, we are also applying some maximum penalties associated with, um, personal injury uh, as well as some criminal violations, which would, uh, could trigger our ability to revoke, um, the license itself. And there's also, you'll see, uh, the suspension, the tier suspension process, which is based upon the number of violations. And on the last slide is just basically some other things that we had reviewed or considered, um, that are not proposed in the, um, in the ordinance for your consideration. And I'll end there. And obviously, there's, there's questions that, um, could address.
Thank you, Mr. Rumpf. I'll begin on my left with Commissioner Kelly, if you have any questions.
I do. Thank you. Um, thank you, Mike, um, for, uh, this detailed presentation. I think it's something that, um, I know Vice Mayor Turkin has talked about this and it's something that, you know, is important to making sure that our city is, um, safe and pleasant for our residents that live here. While still, I mean, respecting people's rights to rent out their property. So it's, you know, it's one of those crazy things. But so I was reading through the proposed ordinance and it made the effective date immediate. But barring any requirements that we put on, it, it, it may put homes out of compliance immediately. So I just wonder, um, you know, if that's, you know, is there? So I just wonder, you know, if that's, you know, is there, is there going to be a window for homes to get up to compliance? What is our procedure going to be? How staff-heavy is that going to be for staff to start that inspection process? Do you know, as of right now, how many applications we have? How many homes are?
No, we don't. There's, at our last count, there's over 12,000 rentals that we have in the city. And there was, I think, two BTR cycles ago. And those are single-family duplex properties and under four units.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission, Salika Brown Development Services Manager. Currently, as Mike stated, we do have over 12,000, I'm sorry, 1,200 rental properties. We had no provisions currently to differentiate between the two. We did create like a back system that was pretty manual for staff to have to remember to go into that back system to flag them just for internal use. We did pull that, that we had like less than 10 identified. So this process will make sure that we have those identified going forward. And to answer Commissioner Kelly's question, it will go into effect immediately for new applicants. We did put a provision inside the ordinance that will require any existing short-term rentals to go through a new process at renewal time.
Okay. And then?
Let me, if I can interrupt, let me go one step further and say, during staff's research, we'd contacted one of the vendors who provides the service of identification and monitoring. And they estimated on their quick review, about 450 that would qualify as a short-term rental, just so you know.
Okay, thank you. And then also, I saw in the ordinance where it touched on, I talked about this in my agenda review. So Andrew, I was away when I had my agenda review, so if I forget anything, please try and remind me. But we were talking about penalties, if they're in violation or have repeat offenses where the police get called out numerous times. And I know when I spoke to city staff, there was a potential for making the ordinance a little bit more clear, because I believe we can revoke or cancel their application or license. We can't ever bar them from, like, renewing, is my understanding. But can you just briefly just explain to me what are, what the current is? And if there's anything we can do to make that stronger, you know, to, you know, to penalize these short-term rentals that are causing issues and they're not staying in compliance? What we can do to?
Commissioner Kelly, currently, the department director has the power to revoke or rescind a current business tax receipt. And then it goes before the special magistrate, who will then render a decision. If the applicant at that point requests to still challenge it, they will need to go through the court system to request to stay on the revocation until that process is completed.
And then is that for any violation at all? And then, I guess what my question is, is I'm going to assume on their first violation, they go through that process. But then if they're chronic, if it's a chronic issue, then what can we do as a city to protect the residents who live next to these homes when it's a chronic issue? You know, what can we enhance the, and maybe this is for legal, can we enhance, how can we enhance the ordinance? What can we do when we have these chronic nuisance issues or these chronic issues, not nuisance per se, because that's a whole different ballgame, but these chronic issues where we, you know, on these short-term rentals, you know, what can we do? Can we enhance the ordinance any stronger to, you know, kind of to force that?
Good question. Let me add to what Ms. Brown has stated, that I think one of the primary differences between existing and what's proposed is more details, because she had indicated that, yes, the department director can take action to do this, we can do this if things are confirmed, but it doesn't indicate what it is and how many and how long. So this does give that, if you look at the suspension schedule, and then the revocation schedule, is based upon what grounds can we revoke? Well, we don't indicate in here, and this is an afterthought, and we can clean that up. Can they reapply once revoked? I don't think our ordinance indicates if someone's revoked, if they can reply. So we need to indicate that as well. And perhaps there might be a violation, which, like, we identify some of the violations that warrant greater action. So whether it's criminal, and the nature of the criminal activity, as well as the number of persons, which is one of our sensitive issues. So based upon those, we can revoke. So that, that is, whether there's more teeth in there or whether we have greater sink events, we can look and see if something needs to be beefed up, but the intent is to provide the details numerically on which we can justify whether it's suspension or revocation.
Okay.
We may be able, and we'll talk about, we may be able to put something that if you've been revoked, you can't reply for a certain period of time, or reapply, excuse me.
Right, I mean, I.
Or it makes you ineligible to apply for a certain period of time if you get to the point where you're having your license revoked. These are the short-term rental, maybe not for the business tax, because that's skin covered by statute, but short-term rental certificates.
I don't know, I know some of the issues we've been having, like, some of the businesses that's been criminally charged, they'll change, transfer ownership. That's one of the things that we don't have a whole lot of control over. Say, for instance, I'm criminally charged and we revoke mine, I can then deed it to my sister, who then continues the activity. That's one of the things that we do encounter.
Under the law, can it follow the property or does it truly follow the applicant?
Well, again, I'm spitballing here, but there may be a process where we can have it follow the property, but then provide a process for somebody to basically.
It's a legitimate, right.
Transact or something like that. Not familiar with that being done anywhere else, but it doesn't mean it can't be done. It might be, and it's something we could look at.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, if you could look into that, because those are, and those are my concerns, is, you know, that was Andrew, I know we spoke about, you know, making sure that the, you know, the penalties for, you know, for the issues needs to be, you know, strong enough. We're showing them that, you know, we're, we're good with you being here as long as you are, and your renters are treating the homes and their neighborhoods like it was their home and their neighborhood. So, I mean, those, those are kind of my questions. So thank you for answering those, and I might come up with another one, but those were the ones I think.
Commissioner Kelly, can I just add? One of the things I do like about the new ordinance is the proposal to add the fines to it, which would follow our code enforcement process. So if they happen to lean the property, that will kind of hinder that transfer until they abate that issue.
Right. No, I like, yeah, I like when we can lean a property too.
While we're talking about amendments, modifications before second reading, I also want to point out, Mr. Woodworth earlier spoke virtually over one of the issues that he thinks is absent. And I also spoke to one of his neighbors earlier today, asking the same question about waste management. And I think we've already got a format or structure in here that we can easily require that to be added to what we define as the posting for individual property.
A book or whatever.
We've got emergency numbers and so forth, things that local responsible parties on that in close proximity to the landline. We can also add, require that they add the solid waste collection pickup and rules. Now, I know our solid waste system right now, it appears that we could penalize for something set out more than a day in advance. I'm not sure if it indicates, I didn't see it when I read it, if there's a penalty for the canisters to be left out after pickup for so many hours. But we could have those details written into this, so it applies.
I know that's in my HOA, because I've gotten letters before. All right, thank you. I think I'm good for right now. Thank you.
Commissioner, we're going to turn to Commissioner Haye.
I really appreciate Commissioner Kelly asked a lot of the questions that I was going to ask, and you guys answered a lot of other issues. But I would like to know, how do we stack up with the surrounding cities on this? In other words, what was the motivation for going this direction?
Motivation of staff was to adhere to a request from the commission to prepare an ordinance for consideration. We do know that, I mean, I, in thinking about, as I started hearing about this, as I was on full-time for staff, began wondering, what is Boynton Beach's situation with these? And I think we're, although we have not been a hotbed, there has been some isolated issues here. We haven't been, it hasn't been a major issue for us. So now is the time to put something on the books.
That makes sense.
And I think we've looked at cities who have had greater problems and things that are documented, and nationwide too. Generally, we're doing what we can, puts a teeth in the process. Also, obviously, the way I look at any new set of regulations addressing a current problem, it's, it should be pilot somewhat unofficially. It's on the books, it's administered, it's enforceable, but we should, staff should be looking at it over the coming months and to see if there are some tweaks that are necessary, if it's doing what it needs to do, and getting perhaps police call data and things like that to evaluate, if you will.
I have some more questions later. Thank you. That's all for Ron.
All right, let's go to Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Salika, Mike, Adam, thank you guys so much for putting this together. I know this is very detailed, and I know there's not a lot that we can do because of the state of Florida and statutes that protect this. I've asked a lot of my questions already, you know, just a couple of things I want to point out, that, you know, 450 was the count for the STRs. I got around that utilizing AirDNA. 286 of them are in the zip code of 33435, which is the east side of the city, right? So like predominantly, your non-HOA communities, 48 and 33436, 58 and 33426. Some of the activity that's gone on in these has been dogfighting, gangs, house parties. You know, I've had this, you know, run in personally. So, you know, I think it is important that we continue to welcome tourism in our city because we do not have a hotel in the east side. So this is essentially a way to invite people to Boynton Beach. And, you know, we don't, I'll speak for myself, I don't want to, you know, eliminate, you know, any tourism here, but I think it is important to be responsible about what happens in our residents' backyard. I also think, too, it assists the police department by initiating some of these regulations, because then you have access to those property owners or the management companies with the the local responsible party. I personally would like to see that in the tri-county area, Broward to Palm Beach to Martin County. I think that's within an hour if there's an issue. And then that would also, that would also essentially incentivize maybe like more local jobs, because if I'm a property owner, like, I would hire, you know, maybe a Boynton Beach property management company to manage these rentals, right? Because they're right next by. So I think that, like, that's an economic driver in itself. I agree with everything that Commissioner Kelly said. I mean, you brought things up that I didn't even think about, so thank you for that. With the timeline, I know that one of the messages that I got from the Airbnb policy advisor or public relations, I forget his title, was that a lot of these would go into, I'm sorry, I can't think of the word. Yeah, yes. And so they.
Going to affect.
Yeah. And so, you know, I think having that timeline is important, you know, 60 days, 90 days, however we want to start that, to make sure that people don't go into default. The other thing that would, I want to be careful with is it, the property owners, so it says like the peer-to-peer platform, Airbnb, VRBO, whatever, you know, platform they use, they have to display the BTR and the certificate of occupancy. So there's been requests to change that for the owner, which I think does make sense because at the end of the day, the platforms are utilized, right? And they have their own set of regulations, and then the city has their own set of regulations. But I think ultimately, it comes down to the property owner on being responsible. So I would like to see that amended if, if my colleagues are okay with that, so we don't have a bunch of people going to default. And then also, you know, to, just to make sure that we're not, you know, preventing small business, because I know some, some individuals that live in Chapel Hill, you know, they, they live in the neighborhood and they have some properties in there, and, you know, that might be their source of revenue, and we don't want to mitigate that. You know, we want to make sure that we're, you know, continuing, you know, this economic driver, you know, for tourism, but we're being responsible again. The annual inspections, I like, I like the fees. Thank you for getting that together. And then, I think the only thing I wanted to add was the zoning. So I believe this, there's nothing we can do at the city level in respect to where they can be in respect to zoning, right? Because I know all the majority of them are single-family zoning. I know there's some in multifamily. There's nothing the city can do to switch that, correct? That's protected by the state statute.
Well, it depends on what the effect of that.
Yes.
The effect would be of such a rule that we'd write, if it does pretty much ban them from a certain district, then it probably would.
Yeah, just about any type of requested attorney general to ask if we could do this in a zoning district that could create distance requirements or number limitations or prohibitions or overlay districts that they've said now that gets into the number, limiting the number of them or prohibiting them. Because you're prohibiting certain ones, if you hit that capacity, if you hit that distance or you hit that, you know, number, for example, you would prohibit additional ones. And that's the way the state had viewed it.
Awesome. Thanks for that clarification, Mike. And then, so I know there's, there's something in there for sexual predators. I would like to add gangs in there to prohibit that. I don't know how we regulate that, what that looks like, what that language would, would be. But if we could have something, you know, if that's even possible, if not, totally get it.
Counsel, could you weigh in on that?
I'd have to think about that one. I mean, of course, I don't know, I don't know how you would, I'd have to look at that. I don't know how you would do that off the top of my head. You know, First Amendment issues, like right to gather, those kind of things, affiliate. So, but, you know, we'll, we'll take a look and see if we can maybe get with the police departments, if they have any thoughts on, on some type of language they could put in there that wouldn't cause any consternation with groups that don't fall within that.
Currently, currently, the ordinance has been drafted, I'm sorry to interrupt, it's been drafted to, again, address a performance type standard. So in the event that there is physical injury or harm, that type of even criminal activity, that's battery, so forth, or drug-related, we're capturing that. So since we are capturing some of the characteristics that could be generated from that presence.
Perfect, perfect. And Mike, you already mentioned that you took down notes for the, for the trash and the waste, you got that down. We talked about the gangs. So Commissioner Kelly brought up a good idea about if the penalty would be tied to the homeowner or the property. I like the idea of the property, because I think a lot of times you'll have these properties, you know, paid in full with a, with an LLC that's the property name, right? You see that a lot. So I would like to explore that or piggyback with what Commissioner Kelly mentioned.
Yeah, I took some notes and some thoughts that I go over with them before second reading.
And then, again, the parking, I think, is, was a good note, too. But listen, outside of that, I mean, it would have been pretty vocal about, you know, why I think we need to get this done. And I think, you know, it's just, we're not, we're not putting any red tape up, we're just holding people accountable to keep our community safe and clean. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Cruz, any additional thoughts?
Good evening, everybody. All right.
Good evening.
So, I think this is a, it's well-intended, it's a well-intended regulation. And I think the purpose of the whole thing, as was mentioned by people before and people who, you know, phone calls that I've gotten, that sort of thing. It's basically noise, parking, safety and garbage. I think we need to think about a little bit more on the trash side, how we're going to regulate that, because we do get, I mean, I'm guessing every neighborhood, but my neighborhood gets the trash pickup twice a week. And so if you have an Airbnb that is rented more than that, they're going to have a lot of trash, and the problem is the amount of trash that these properties bring. So, you know, we don't want to overwhelm our utilities department or with having to go back every day on those Airbnbs, but we're going to have that problem. Like, even if we pass this regulation, trash is going to continue to be a problem. And I feel like we're not yet solving that issue. And we need to think about deeply how that. And we need to think about deeply how that could be solved in a real sense and in a practical sense during implementation. I I mean, I read all of it. It's a lot, even for me. It's a lot. And so it's a lot to digest. Um, some of the things I gathered were, one thing that I can tell you that um I do like is the fact that people have to register themselves and they have to do all that. Um, I would like to add to this, to implement some sort of a fee if the police department has to be called more than once per day. Because that's really the issue. The issue is our police department having to come out and face potentially dangerous or maybe not, but potentially dangerous situations where if you're calling the police more than once per day, that should be a huge red flag. And if the neighbors have to do that, then, you know, that's one of the things that we are, like, I'm by the regulation, it appears that we're attempting to regulate. I don't like section two point nine one because it has a maximum fee of fifteen thousand dollars per violation. I think it's unreasonable and excessive, in my opinion. Some people use this type of business as their sole income. And if we were to create a fifteen thousand dollar penalty, I think that's a bit much. Um, I mean, think about a person who maybe owns two homes and is renting one of them and is doing this to try to make money. Whether they got laid off from their job, so they're doing real estate on the side or whatever, whatever it is they're doing, you know, a fifteen thousand dollar penalty, I think is is excessive and I am not, um, I'm not in favor of that. Um, and then, yeah, basically, just, I think the fees should really be focused on how many times the police department's called. And if, you know, if you're getting more than one call per day, I think at that point, there should be some specific fees for having to have the police department come out more than once per day. And it should probably be focused on that, in my opinion. But again, the board, there's many people on this board and we just have to see what the consensus is. And I'm thinking of that from a perspective of a public nuisance, like it's been mentioned before, parties or potentially dangerous situations with, you know, I won't go into details because it's not pretty, not a pretty picture. But having having those type of situations and understanding that the pressure a lot of times is going to come to either community standards or a police department. And in reality, I would like to have a roadmap from management on how this would be implemented. I mean, I have a master's degree and I'm reading a lot of this stuff and I understand most of it. But there are things that I personally still don't understand. So I can tell you that the average person would very likely also not understand. So maybe making it more user-friendly to allow, you know, people to understand what this means in practicality. And again, it's very long. There's a lot in here. Um, but, you know, it is well-intended. And I do support having a checks and balances for um short-term rentals because it is creating a public nuisance in a lot of neighborhoods. And, you know, neighbors and residents need to feel safe in their homes. And if they're not feeling safe, then we definitely need to do something to protect them and to make sure that they feel safe in their community, making sure that the trash that is being taken out, if it is excessive, we have to think about that. Because, again, trash comes twice a week. So if we're having Airbnbs, people stay what, two days? And they create excessive amounts of trash and then the next person comes in for three days and creates excessive amounts of trash. By the time that you're halfway through the week, it's gonna be overflowing and there's no really backup option. So I don't, I think we need to look into addressing the trash issue um more in detail. But I do know that it's complex and I do understand that in implementation, you know, how do we determine that? And then I'm also thinking about not just the policy per se, not the code, but in implementation, like, how do we know, how do we communicate between, let's say, community standards, the the building department, the development department, community standards and our police department to know how that these, to be connected, to communicate, to know who these Airbnb properties are? We need to create some sort of a a database system and share it with those apartments within the city for for everyone to be aware and for it to be readily available. And so I do understand there's the um, the person responsible for property and it could create jobs and that's great. But I I think we also need to look at how this would be implemented and how we're gonna solve the trash issue. Because, again, we're still having trash twice per week. And even though we're creating this whole regulation and it's it's very well-intended and it does have some great points in it, we're not fully addressing the trash issue. So maybe for those properties, could we maybe add an extra day? Or, you know, it's it gets very complicated and it it burdens, it could burden certain departments. For example, utilities.
One of the things we did address is we asked, we, once we created the application, we asked the applicant how many thirty-two gallon uh trash receptacles they have. Maybe, and I'm not sure if it's in our ordinance, where each property only is allowed one thirty-two. Um, but maybe we can force them to maybe purchase an additional one from solid waste. Just to make sure that they have adequate, uh, you know, trash cans to accommodate the property.
Great idea.
Something else that I wanted to mention is um we are trying to expand some of our application processes in our new electronic permitting system. Um, we have recently created a rental process through that, the standard rental. And our goal is to use it for the short-term rental process. So I have worked on um with planning and zoning to create a checklist to hopefully make this a little bit easier to comprehend for our customers. And then the Sages Gov system is easy to use and hopefully just put those simple checks and balances and check check-offs just to make sure that they have all what's needed even up until the inspection process.
And and also, I think that for the effective date, maybe we could look into maybe giving people like a chance. I I understand if you're already in existence, you would wait until further. But I think, you know, we need to do some sort of a P R campaign, obviously post it on the website, whatever it is that we do, to let people know that this is happening if it if it ends up passing and um put it in layman's terms so that people understand what we're saying.
One of the good things is timing. Um, we're getting ready to send out our business tax renewal notices here within the next month or so. So we can also include that communication within those renewal notices so that we can get it out to the public.
And then I think the last thing that we have to address besides the trash would be like, and I've mentioned it before, but it's communication within departments. And this lack of communication happens like in every company in the world, in in every entity. It it just is. But what can we do to make sure that we're communicating with different departments? For instance, the development department, community standards and our police department to know who are these folks that have the Airbnbs, um, so that they can both share that data. And maybe like if there's a note from the police department that says, hey, we went to this house today twice, then you would get that message on the community standard side and say, okay, well, we're gonna flag them for the fee.
Exactly. I think that that's a good point that you brought up. I'm under the same department as community standards. So we have a very great uh communication medium between the two divisions. Um, one of the good things about this process is the uh development services team processes the applications. But community standards does the physical inspection of the property. So we're constantly communicating um back and forth regarding the rentals and short-term rentals. So that that will be taken care of in that process. And then they have a really good rapport with the police department. They're always coming over to us to seek information as well. So maybe we can set up like a quarterly meeting or something to discuss these. It's possible to do that as well.
Yes, um, I would, the last thing I'm gonna say, I'm almost finished. Um, the last thing I'm gonna say is I think it would be beneficial for the residents, for the homeowners, for the clients, for everyone, for us to make this effective at the time that we have some sort of a data system where the police department and community standards communicates as to what's going on so that we're charging fees properly at the same time and we're doing it. And I think that's not very difficult to do. There's different ways to do it, but um that's something that I would be in favor of.
I'm actually just curious, the data that uh Vice Mayor Turkin received. We've been poached by a lot of different organizations to purchase a software to track down short-term rentals, of course, because we didn't have any provisions. Previously, it wasn't, you know, a smart investment of city resources to expand on that particular facet. But these additional fees that we will obtain through this process may help us grasp, you know, the opportunity to do that so that we can be proactive as well in trying to communicate with these individuals and get them to come into compliance voluntarily versus the other adverse ways that we do.
Oh, absolutely. And do we have any idea of what the cost for that would be?
We did. We received an estimate upfront. We were doing the research, about twenty-three thousand a year, and that's based upon the four hundred and fifty count. Um, that's five thousand dollars set up and eighteen thousand um averaged out per month, twelve hundred or something per month.
And then both departments would have access to it. And that sounds like a great way to communicate.
And I should point out that that's just from one of the vendors. Obviously, if we wanted to go according to our process, we'd get more than one estimate.
All right. Thank you. Let's go to Vice Mayor. We're gonna go loop back around the days.
No, a lot of good points. Um, so just to put in perspective, you know, let's say four hundred dollars. I think, can we go back to the fees? Are there, I T? I think like five hundred dollars roughly for the application. Was that two hundred thousand dollars a year in revenue? The one thing I know about development, they usually pay for themselves, right? And so like the software would be accounted for, then, you know, you have, you're building revenue just by doing this. And then, you know, if you needed to hire more, like another, an additional code officer, you know, that that has a, you know, collateral duty that's focused on this, it pays for itself, you know, so. And then also it alleviates from the P D, you know, because you're making homeowners accountable to not pay a fifteen thousand dollar fine. You want someone to not pay a fifteen thousand dollar fine, tell them that they'll get fined fifteen thousand dollars if they if they do something. And I and I think, and I ask this too, because I have the same sentiment as you, Commissioner Cruz, that fifty thousand dollars is a little steep steep. But I think it's up to fifteen thousand dollars, correct? It's not a hard fifteen thousand dollars. It's up to. Is that correct?
Correct. It goes with the code compliance, the magistrate process, too. So, I mean, they have their opportunity to provide facts. So it isn't just an automatic, you know, too late, you know?
Perfect.
I I read that it was up to, but it, just the fact that it can happen to somebody, I cannot stomach that. I cannot stomach the fact that somebody who is trying to make a living is gonna be fined, could be fined up to fifteen thousand dollars. I I agree with the other parts. I agree with the parts of charging for the license and and all these things. And it's great. It's, you know, creating revenue. Um, but I don't agree with that.
Yeah.
The only thing that I'll I'll add, Commissioner Cruz, is that the the up to fifteen thousand um irreversible penalty is only for certain infractions. It looks like it's for commercial use of the property and for maximum occupancy violations. So even if that number, so even if that number was was reduced, we're not um, we're not doing anything that state statute doesn't already permit. So we can, the the city can already impose irreversible and irreparable violations of those fee amounts. We just incorporated them into this code section, if that if that makes sense.
And to think about the scenario, let's think through this. So just because there were sixteen people on the property one night, how would we know? So chances are noise was generated to a certain amount or some other action drew attention um to the property that brought police or code officer on site to take note of that. So, you know, it isn't that quick. There has to be these characteristics of it that would warrant presence and and drastic action rather than just a warning. Obviously, someone could walk on the property, P D would walk on the property and if they would take a look and they could probably assess it, whether it's a nuisance category that's going on or maybe a neighbor is just fed up with something going on there at all. You know what I mean? So it isn't like someone's gonna take account of, oh, we've got sixteen people there, sorry, and documents and off to the magistrate it goes and fifteen thousand dollar fine. No, it's gonna be more than that.
Thank you, Mike. Ms. Stone, I see you're on the podium. Did you want to add anything?
Yeah, Community Standards Director, I just wanted to kind of put your mind at ease a little bit about the fifteen thousand. That's, that is the extreme usually. And I'll be honest with you, usually, that's not something the, even the special magistrate would do unless we have significant evidence of, you know, that it is very, very um damaging um violation that's happening. So I wouldn't like focus too much on that because, yeah, it is it's up to, but it's not really a a very used amount, so I would say enforcement. And we would definitely educate the residents and property owners and property management companies um when this goes into fruition because we'll definitely give that grace period. Because we don't want to just go out there and start citing everybody who has or own the property. And if we go to use a software program that, um, you know, allows us to see who is, that's, that's gonna be very overwhelming for everybody. Not just the residents, it's gonna be overwhelming for the city. So education is one hundred percent gonna be the the first goal in this.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Stone. Let's wrap up. Commissioner Hayden, Commissioner Kelly.
Well, I I think, you know, this is a a huge move for the city and it's a good one, okay, in my opinion. I think the um, when we get to that stage where it's uh all tweaked and everything and we accept it and all that good stuff, you really need to educate the public. It's gonna take several sources to do that. Our webpage, the software that you guys are maybe looking for, uh, we may have to even have workshops in addition to to that, to really uh uh simple handouts that people can understand all this logging that we're talking about, that we're having trouble with. I'm sure that you can uh join it down to a a little, almost like a checklist type of thing, uh, the do's and don'ts of of what can be done with this uh uh S T Rs. And that's not gonna be a simple task, uh, but I think it's necessary. So I would say, you know, continue to move forward. But uh, just remember that the community citizens are not well abreast as you are. Okay? Yes.
You're gonna get all of us on this item. So um, just just so the commission is aware, the uh the corresponding application to this code amendment is required to be adopted via resolution and will come to the next meeting uh in correlation with this. So you will see the application, the checklist, the uh more uh public-friendly version of these code amendments. So you will get a chance to see that. Uh, they will be processed to through Sages. And we do have a a marketing coordinator that already has us on her radar to start uh spreading the word as soon as it becomes effective.
Thank you.
Looking forward to the second reading.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kelly.
Yeah, I have two super quick. Amanda, thank you for bringing up the application. And I guess my uh, I would just wonder, since I haven't seen it yet, is, do we require as part of the application for them to acknowledge our rules? Do do we require them to acknowledge that trash gets picked up on Mondays and Wednesdays? Do we get, you know, acknowledgements that, you know, I I just, that's like the first time that you have this homeowner seeing what the city is going to, you know, what? So if it's not in there, can we please look real quick before it comes to us on how we can incorporate some? I understand that these are the rules of the city and trash is this day and recycling is this day. And if I need this, it's X, Y and Z. And just incorporate them in the application so they see it one time there. They've seen it. They've acknowledged, I've, I acknowledge I've received the trash schedule and I will post it at the house. I acknowledge I've received, you know, the code violations list of what I could be fined with. And I acknowledge, you know, those things where they have to sign off and acknowledge that they're aware of these things exist and they have seen them and they know them.
Yes, they are currently itemized in the application. Uh, and one step above that, we actually have a couple of affidavits that are built into the application for the local responsible party affidavit. Uh, and there's one other one that's already in there for the the owner, uh, the property owner affidavit. So there there, we do, we are doing that. We understand that this is a a complicated amendment. We are, I'm trying to get ahead of implementation already.
Okay, great. Because I think that that, I mean, although we all get the apple agreed to the terms and conditions and how many people read the terms and conditions, but at least we can say, we've at least shown it to you once. Here's the first time you saw it. You can't say you haven't ever seen it because you signed this document. So it's just one, you know, So it's just one, you know, thing. And then my other super quick question is, I wanted someone to define, because there's no definitions set forth in the ordinance. What is the definition of irreparable and irreversible in nature harm that would? Ms. Stone, maybe you wanna come, that, I mean, I just, I mean, this isn't like your trash didn't get picked up. This isn't, you parked your car on the side of the road. I mean, irreparable and irreversible in nature that would cause, I mean, I, I would imagine, you know, obviously, for small, little violations, I wouldn't want to burden a homeowner who is just trying to make a living. But if they're in, getting fines of up to fifteen thousand dollars, they're a problem in my mind. So what, but what is, because there isn't a definition for what irreparable and irreversible in nature means.
It's just basically, basically something that you can't undo. Like, to put it in a simple term, or a simple example, it'd be like removing a, a tree. You know, once you remove that tree, or you chop it down, remove that tree, you can't put that same tree back where it was. So with the short-term rental, you know, they're talking about changing the, the use, like, once you change the use, I mean, you can go back and redo it with a permit, but, um, or the, the unit size, but you already did the damage. You already did it. There's really no go back. You, it's, it's not erasable, basically. You know, so they'll be penalized for doing that without the proper steps.
So I guess, for instance, I mean, you would think, I mean, I'm just trying to think of ideas. I mean, even if they tried to convert their garage into a bedroom in order to maximize their space, that's something that can be removed, so it's not irreversible, right?
Right.
Sort of.
Sort of, yeah.
But if they went and added a shed to make a she shed, or they added to their property, and they did something that was not irreversible, then they could be fined upward of fifteen thousand dollars. And if they're doing something outside of city code, then they should expect to receive some sort of penalty, I guess that's my.
Well, any violation, I definitely expect some type of, um, penalty. But it also is up to the special magistrate to deem whether she believes this is, or she or he believes this is irreversible or irreplaceable in nature. Um, and then also she decides, or she, we have a special magistrate, she also keeps saying she, but she'll decide whether or not, um, what the penalty could be. The city will always recommend, but she makes the final decision.
Yeah, I'm just trying to do, I know you say it doesn't happen very often, but what's, do you have an example of what this could potentially be? A violation like that?
Well, this is new for our city, so I wouldn't have anything to refer to.
Not even, no, I mean, like, even in our code violations, like even just generally, this language isn't in our regular code violations?
Yeah, it, it is. It's in chapter, it's in chapter two, um, Article Five. It's, it's also, we're governed by Chapter one sixty-two, the state statute, and it's in there as well.
Right. I'm not trying to, like, beat a dead horse. No, and I'm looking for examples of like what, you know, this is, this isn't something like parking on the grass. This is something that's like,
Right.
They cannot, it can't be fixed, and this is detrimental to everybody.
I think it's a very good question. Let me add the scenario. And, and Curl Springs is, is where I saw them also use a similar association between that language that state statutes allows feet to be such and the maximum persons. So I think it, again, it's associated with that, that factor of maximum people, because if it exceeds a certain number, you have a major event and major damage or injury could result, which is not reversible.
Right. So like, somebody has a huge party, and somebody really gets hurt, and then they come after the city, or potentially it then falls on the city, then, you know, we can fine to, as part of that.
I'm not sure if you can bring in intangible factors, but two, if you live next to something like that, and that type of event happened where there was major property damage or even physical injury, what did the adjoining neighbors think about that? And I'd be willing to bet that people have moved out of neighborhoods for less than that.
Thank you, Mike. I'd like to hear from council. It looks like you wanted to chime in.
Just in, in other venues, what I, I've seen, that it's contemplated for is, um, if, if someone hasn't, has a, um, short-term rental, and then they use it as an event hall, okay? And, and, and had a location that actually conducted weddings, and they brought in DJs and waitstaff and valets, and they were parking up and down the blocks, and, hey, and then it, it burdens the neighborhood. It's clearly a violation of the code. And they finished, and they go to the magistrate, and, okay, first violation, two hundred and fifty dollars. Okay, well, I made, you know, twenty thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars in that event. So the thought process is, in certain extreme circumstances, you would go and you would recommend the maximum fine as, because it's a one-off, and it creates a business risk for these folks to continue to violate the code. So it becomes, so that's, that's, that's what I, the example that I've seen. I haven't seen it actually employed that way. I've seen those types of events happen, though, and the frustration with um, having to go look at a typical daily fine, and it was a one-off, or it was a first time. And under one sixty-two, you don't get a fine the first time. You get it time to comply, and you get a fine for the repeat. So this is an exception under the statute and under the code, where if you have an extreme one-off, they could even fine them just a thousand dollars. But at least the magistrate has the opportunity to say, you guys have found that in this type of situation, they should consider implementing that finding, that you believe it's a serious enough in these, in, in these indications that that's a fine that the city wants to be preserved for the magistrate.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. I'm comfortable with that. Thank you.
All right. Are we finished with comments?
I'm ready to make a motion.
All right. Well, uh, this is only first reading, so there's no public comments. I'm, all right, let's do final comments, and then we'll do a motion.
Yep. Okay, so I would like to support this, but I, I need to have some changes. One of them that I cannot stomach is the fifteen thousand dollar charge, and I know we said that's a maximum. But in reality, if you have something on paper, and it's a, it's a part of the code, somebody can and will get fined up to fifteen thousand dollars, and it is legal to do so. It's, I mean, come on, it's common sense. We, like, it could happen.
Commissioner, can we address that first before you make your list? Let's get input from everybody specifically in that.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we process your thoughts sequentially.
Okay.
Where do the rest of you stand on this, and is there a compromise? Uh, the, I, I understand her concern, which is, you know, somebody could theoretically get the extreme. My understanding from staff is there is a process, there is a magistrate, uh, that will review it. Is that explicitly clear in the, in the, in the text here?
Yes.
It?
It is.
The use of the magistrate is in the text?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. So anybody want to propose any compromise or thoughts to what's been said? Go ahead, Commissioner Hay.
Well, I think, uh, a hundred and fifty-eight dollars is too much to pay for a traffic ticket during the day, but rules are rules.
Yes.
Okay? And I, I feel that once the city established these rules, and they're clear, it didn't say that it's fixed, but you could go up to.
Yes.
If you get someone who's repetitively a problem, then you have to deal with that accordingly. I don't have a problem with it, because, I mean, how often will that happen? I don't think it's gonna be that often.
I don't know that.
There for us to use. If it, uh, if it does, uh, happen. So I don't have a problem with it, uh, being if it's up to fifteen thousand dollars for people that are, uh, uh, repetitively violating.
Interject for a second?
Go ahead.
Um, Florida State Statute, Chapter two oh five, that administers the Business Tax Act, which is what we piggyback off of. For example, it allows us to charge two hundred and fifty dollars a day for delinquency. We don't do that. We charge them ten percent, fifteen percent, to a max of twenty-five percent. That also allows us to charge an additional hundred and fifty dollars. We don't do that either. So, uh, the only way that they would accrue more than the ten to twenty-five percent is if they go through the code enforcement process, and they begin to get fines per day for being in delinquency beyond the thresholds allowed by the code. So the statute sometimes gives us more teeth, and we don't use it just to be more generous on our customers.
Is it for deterrence purposes?
Right.
Yes.
As a deterrent.
Wait, so I want clarification on something. This fifteen, this potentially maximum fifteen thousand dollar penalty would result from not just one potential violation, but an accumulation of many violations.
Yes, and through?
Is that right?
No, not necessarily.
You see? Not necessarily.
It could be, it, it, as I pointed out earlier, it is associated with, um, the two different standards that could be breached, and that is maximum persons. It's not necessarily, um, quantified. So again, it's worst-case scenario.
I think, I think if I finish my whole point, I know you want to separate it, but if I just finish the whole thing, I think it just, it will make sense.
Okay, you know what? Go ahead.
So my proposal is to have the fees connected to public safety. If it's a hazard, if it's a public safety hazard, we should have standard fees, like, that you know what the fees are gonna be, not like, oh, you could get fined up to fifteen thousand dollars, but we have no idea because a magistrate judge is gonna decide that. We don't know, we can't control a magistrate judge. We can only control ourselves. So it makes me uncomfortable to put the onus on, on a resident to, to have that up to fifteen thousand dollar penalty. Not everyone is a big corporation. Not everyone has a mansion where there's gonna be a big wedding with catering and all that, where, you know, if you look at the, the homes that we have, they're, they're normal, single-family homes, a lot of times that are not gonna fit a whole wedding. So it's, you know, I, I understand that point of view, but I think we need to think about the people that we're serving and realizing that there are people that might have, let's say, two homes in Boynton Beach. Maybe they live in one of them, and maybe they're, you know, doing an Airbnb for another one just to make income, maybe because they lost their jobs. Who knows? Like, the economy is strange right now. I just would, I just cannot sleep at night if I, if I agree to input a fifteen thousand dollar penalty up to it, and it's somebody who has, who's charging three hundred bucks a night, four hundred bucks a night, because that's, I mean, that's a normal price that I've seen myself. To have such a huge penalty, just, it, it can scare somebody. It can really scare someone, and it can preclude a person, like, for me personally, I would say, if I was thinking about doing it, which I'm not, but if I were thinking about doing it, I would be like, oh, I do not want a fifteen thousand dollar penalty. I'm not even gonna, I'm not even gonna bother, even if I don't make the income. It can scare a lot of people from doing it, even if it's a good person.
I see your point now. It's a deterrence in both directions. It's a deterrence from even entry, knowing that might be a possibility.
Yep.
And you want some sanitization of fees, so there's clarity on what you might?
Sorry, Mayor.
No, no, I'm just trying to make sense of what you're saying.
Yes, I, I think there should be a, like you said, standardization of fees, so people are, so we're more transparent. Like, we're telling you, if you make us, if you have the police call twice, we're gonna charge you this amount. So people know, and they don't have to go through, jump through so many hoops, judge this, this, and that. It just seems very complicated for, even for me, to be honest with you. I think it's very complicated. Um, we need something. We need some sort of a regulation, but I think that the amount is too much for me to be okay with it. And if we were to at least tell people, like Commissioner Kelly mentioned earlier, like defining what that means, what does irreparable and irreversible mean?
We'll, we'll get to you, Vice Mayor, but please continue.
How do we define what, like, can we at least tell people this is what that means? Like, if you do this, that is irreparable or irreversible. Like, this is what that is. Can we at least tell people what it is, so that if they do get up to fifteen thousand dollars in fees, which I still don't agree with, can they at least know what it is that they should not do, so that they don't do it? Does that make sense?
Look, we'll, we'll now go to the next person to Vice Mayor, but before you begin, Vice Mayor, let me just say that if this conversation goes on for an additional ten minutes or more, I would recommend we move this to a workshop, because clearly, there's a lot to be hashed out here, and I appreciate everyone's genuine and sincere input, and I just, you know, this is, this is prime example for a workshop topic, okay? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, what I can't stomach, what I can't stomach is that I went to one of these, and I had a gun pulled out on me. So you're damn right, they should be fined fifteen thousand dollars. They should be fined a hundred thousand dollars, because that's the safety of an elected official, because I got called by people who are frightened from negligence of ownership. You are damn right, they should be fined up to fifteen thousand dollars. I would, I, 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 you let me finish? So I think, again, this goes through magistrate. We've heard from Candace, who says it's very rare that there's, that's even written up. There's only certain violations that you see this fifteen thousand dollar fine. But for me, what's important is getting this done in an effective manner that incentivizes responsible management and keeps our citizens safe and our city clean. And with that, I'm gonna make a motion to move this forward.
All right. Let me just remind everybody, this is only first reading, so this is by no means, no, not final. Are there any, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Uh, I hear a second, so, um, is there any further discussion? We've had plenty of discussion. All those in favor of? Okay, all right.
Sorry, I'm.
Like I said, I have the timer, because we're gonna move this to a workshop if it exceeds, uh, ten thirty.
Well, I think it should not be to ten thirty. It needs to be a workshop, because this is a major,
Even better.
This is a major decision that we're making here, and I, I don't, I understand the points that are being made. By the same token, there's a sliding scale that we can, can, can look at. Uh, you can assign a, a list of, you were talking earlier about the percentages, even though you're allowed by state X amount of dollars as a, as a cap, you can still, uh, not do that, but you have that, uh, possibility to go there if you need to go there. Chances are, we won't need to go there, because they will listen to our PD. They'll listen to, uh, the regulation. They're, they're, listen to what we are saying. So that could be a sliding scale, but, but, but in, it would be in stages, I guess, whatever the word I'm, I'm looking for. It would be, they would know what they're going to be charged for first violation of, whatever way we want to put it, second violation, whatever. You're gonna be charged this amount of percentage or whatever you're talking about. So, uh, if we can't make that decision here tonight, then I think we really do need to, to have a, a workshop of some kind to, to, to make the right decision, because it's late, it's after ten o'clock, it's ten twenty-two, and I, I think there's a lot of unnecessary, uh, feelings right now, and I just feel that we need to just settle. Let the dust settle, okay? Just let me finish. I gave you, I gave you opportunity, opportunity to say what you had to say. So just let the dust settle, and we work things out. There's no reason for us to rush into this, okay? There's none. So I, it, it really, uh, I, I understand the motivation, where it came from. We told them to do it. But, but are we opening up a Pandora's box here? We opened up a bag of worms here. Maybe we not, maybe we shouldn't even go in this direction, but this is the type of stuff that we need to discuss, and not, not here at ten twenty-three, uh, on, on a, what is this, Tuesday night.
All right, Commissioner, all of you make good points. Here's my proposal so we can move forward. I propose that we support moving forward. It is only first reading. It is not final. But clearly, more discussion needs to be had. So I'm gonna support this so we move forward, but I also want to recommend that we set up a separate meeting just to discuss this item and flush it out in detail. There's a lot of misunderstandings and confusion. Let's just hash it out, but I'm gonna support, uh, this item. I'm gonna call the vote, because you have, you made a motion, you made a second. All those in favor of moving forward?
Roll call.
Yes, yes, thank you. With moving forward with twelve A, proposed ordinance number twenty-three dash zero one two, uh, City Clerk. I'm gonna call, we will have more, we will have more time, but go ahead, uh, City Clerk.
Who made the second?
Uh, Commissioner Kelly. Again, first reading, not final. Just keep that in mind.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Point of vote. I need clarification.
On?
On, on whether or not the workshop or what are we saying is going to be continued upon this, this vote of mine.
That is my proposal. He mentioned an additional meeting.
So that is included in the motion that I'm voting on.
The motion was only to pass.
Yep, I was gonna do that next, but Commissioner, that is my intent, to make it contingent upon it. Yeah, we'll do that.
That being said.
Because very clearly, there's a lot of discussion here, right? So absolutely.
Yes. That being said, I vote yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
As long as we set up specific fees and we become transparent with the meaning of certain words in the code, then, yes, I would be in support of this.
Vice Mayor Turkin?
Yes.
Mayor Penserga?
Yes.
Yes. With contingency on the addition.
The vote, the motion didn't have those in there. I know you, maybe you intended to move it and put on the record what you expect to be discussed, but I want to make sure she understood.
So the motion that we're voting on is just to move forward with this first reading. It's a draft.
Yes.
Okay. It is my full intention to proceed next, after this vote, to setting up a workshop or some sort of separate meeting to hash out everything else. Okay? Because we just can't do all of this all in one night.
Right.
Yes.
Are we going to take that through a motion?
So do you finish calling everybody, right, City Clerk?
I did.
All right, all right. Motion passes. So now let's discuss setting up a separate time to discuss this in more detail. Let's do a workshop.
I'm open to that and I'll, I'll make anything work likewise.
Does anybody have any strong preferences on days, times?
Well.
Mayor.
Be done before the 21st.
Yes, uh, go ahead. Is that you, Catherine? I couldn't tell.
Mayor, I was going to suggest the July 5th date. Since we canceled the meeting that day, that's a time that we had already carved out.
What second reading would be in?
It could be, but you don't have to do it consecutively.
We don't have to do it into it.
We'll shove it, we'll shove it down.
That was good.
You don't have to do it consecutively.
Yeah, I was going to suggest, I was going to suggest if you're discussing doing a workshop, that when, if you adopt the motion, that, that second reading's not scheduled until after you complete the workshop.
As part of the motion.
Right. We're not going to, you know, I wouldn't, I would.
Absolutely.
Do the workshop and then we'll schedule it, then do the notice. So we might even not make the very consecutive next available meeting because it hadn't been noticed yet. Let's just do the workshop and then from the workshop, do the second reading after that, not, not have second meeting until after you've completed your workshop or workshops.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the only thing with July 5th is there, I mean, the city staff here, because that was one of the considerations of moving the date was that staff wasn't going to be here. So, or potentially with it being a long holiday, so.
We just pull up the calendar real quick. What's, what's after that?
Do we have anything prior to the 20th, like prior to the commission meeting on the 20th? I know, I know we've had a bunch of mini workshops.
Um, um. You know, we have CRA on the 13th.
Maybe do what we do with the parks, 5:30 on the 20th?
Well, considering, I expect this conversation to be lengthy based on what I've heard today. Uh, what about the 6th?
6th of what?
Of July, just, you know. I'm just throwing that out there. That's a Thursday.
A Thursday?
Yeah. Anybody have any commitments on Thursday?
I'm sorry, which day are we discussing? July 6th?
July 6th.
In the afternoon, 6:30 in the afternoon, I have another meeting, but before that, I'm, I'm good. What time do you want to make it?
Well, uh, they've got work requirement, I, yes, July 6th, but they've got job requirements. So they can't make it superbly early, right?
No, because then the next week we have budget stuff and I'm already taking, we're taking time off for that, so we can't.
Right.
We can do a half an hour before a city commission meeting.
I'm just not certain we'll get it done in a half an hour.
Do we start at 6:30 and do an hour and a half on the 20th? We don't have anything on the calendar prior, I see. So maybe start at 6:30 with the city commission meeting and do the workshop 5:00 PM on the 20th. We'll get here at 5:00.
I can't get there at 5:00. I have work until 5:00.
5:15 maybe?
5:30 is the earliest and with traffic.
Are we okay to start and then we can start our comments and then you can join us?
Do we anticipate this going over an hour?
Probably.
They know.
I'm going to say no, Commissioner. That just really depends on what happens in the meeting.
And I would hope that.
What did you say, Commissioner Hay, last time? Asked you questions before?
Well, this is the thing, though. If, if the issue, if we understand what each commissioner's or mayor's issue is, my issue is with the potential maximum fees. And my issue is targeting the fees to be related to public safety. So if we can make, if we can, maybe staff can work on like a fee schedule of some sort that is defined. I think that's more of a fair way to be transparent with people and tell people, hey, if you do this, this is what's going to happen. I don't want to open a whole can of worms again because it's going to get late, but.
Real quickly, though, just real quickly, though, there is, what we do, they are listed here in this ordinance. So it falls back into our existing code compliance system and the penalties, penalties that are associated with such violations. So it does exist.
Okay.
And we can use that, just so you know, we've got something in place.
Maybe we could just have that too as a reference so that we could see what that looks like.
So that would be attached to the application that you were going to see with the associated item.
Right, so.
Um, so, and I, I think would be helpful for staff. I, I understand that this is taking a long time, but the only notes I really have are associated with violations and fees. Are there other areas of concern that staff need? I, I just don't want to set up a workshop and us not bring you back the information that you guys are really looking for. So I heard some concerns from Commissioner Cruz. Thank you for your comments regarding violations and fees. Are there other areas of concerns that you would like us to address?
I had some, um, staff was going to look in or you were going to look at um, the level, like how and if we can revoke a license or application, if they can renew. And he says, right, so that, um, based on, yeah, so we're all sort of on the same thing as far as violations, but the revoking and can we do it permanently? Or are they allowed to renew?
Yes.
And, and then there was also, we talked about briefly about can we link it to the property as opposed to the applicant? And so that's another thing that you were, they were going to revise.
Can the gang.
Right.
Can I, can I make a recommendation? And Council, please chime in if you think it's legal. No, it's all right. Just a recommendation. Each of us will have our own set of issues. Is there any way we could just privately send that information to staff and they'll compile it so they'll be ready for the workshop?
Yeah, could then.
And here's another recommendation. Can we just let Kendra reach out to each of us to determine a date that's available and feasible for all of us?
I'm fine with the 20th. We talked about the 20th at 5:30.
So one of the things that, Mayor, if you don't mind, um, with the city attorney mentioned that since we're kind of bifurcating this and you're going to do a workshop in advance of the second reading.
Yes.
You really only, if you want to do it on the 20th and set aside an hour, if you go pass it, we just kick the next can to the next commission meeting. Do a shorter period of time, you know, you'll have, you'll have a time. What I'm saying is that you don't have to make a decision like we're voting on the 20th. So start at 5:30 to 6:30, shut it down in an hour if you get it for only an hour.
So 5:30 on the 20th, June 20th, and we'll plan for about an hour's worth of discussion. Okay? Is that all right with everyone?
6:30, shut it off.
Yep, because we do have the other meeting, of course.
Right.
The other.
And we're going to not.
Since we're not doing the ordinance that they, it, it makes sense that you could do that.
You're going to want to.
If you had, if you needed more time, we could schedule for the next available meeting.
I'm comfortable with that. Counsel, you were about to add something?
I was going to ask, you want to keep it 5:30 to 6:00 and then the regular meeting at 6:00? And or do you want to go ahead and move the regular meeting to 6:30?
Let's move it to 6:30 because people showed up today thinking the meeting was at.
If we're going to. You know, uh, 5 would be 5 to 5:30.
No, people.
Yeah, it's the work. Yeah, give some time to get here.
30?
Right.
5:30, yeah, 5:30.
5:30.
And then 6:30 will be our regular city commission meeting. I am comfortable with that. Do we all, are we all in agreement?
We, yeah, we have that by motion since you are moving the time of your commission meeting, so there's no doubt that.
So move. Is that, yep, is there a second? All right, see, motion second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say no. Ayes have it. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Do we need public comment on that?
No.
Right? Or is that a joke?
I'm trying to mean.
Okay, we are now moving on to the last, last item of tonight. This was the new item that was added, Town Square Discussion. Uh, this was your request, Vice Mayor, if you'd like to kick it off.
Yeah, I mean, I'll keep it short and sweet because I know it's, it's late. I would just, um, like to see where my colleagues are at in respect to looking at a fact, finding analysis of what happened with Town Square. See if there's anything that we can, um, you know, change, you know, in, in policy, make sure that it never happens again. And again, not to, not to put blame or anything like that, but just identify what happened, dissect and make sure this doesn't happen again. Um, simple.
Uh, fully support you. I've said that before a couple of years ago, so.
I support that. I just don't feel it should be done tonight. Just give.
Right.
Nope.
Move ahead.
Well, yeah, no, well, uh, I, I, this is just to add on future agenda.
Yes.
And.
I support that.
I actually, just to be absolutely clear.
Yes.
Are you proposing that we direct staff to start beginning some sort of fact finding? Okay, just be absolutely clear.
Yes.
Okay, and for them to come back with recommendations, so we'll have a future meeting.
So we know what to do.
And then we'll hash out the recommendations.
Correct.
Okay, all right. So make sure that's what I understood.
Because of this is why we got here.
Yeah, just identifying, hey, let's, let's take a look at what happened and then, um, again, a fact finding analysis.
Okay.
Commissioner Kelly, you're right with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
I'll bring the point.
Right, I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's good, it's, uh, good to know, uh, how we got to where we are and how we can fix. I think we've, I think we have, uh, recognized and realized some of those through the process, but to just have it on the record and clear, a lot of that stuff was in closed door. And although now it's open to the public and public, the likelihood that they're going to go back and read it or is slim. So it's good to put out that there was, you know, what the disconnect was, so.
Overall, discussion and closed session, I think we know how we got here, but we'll discuss.
I, I think there are still some questions that have not been answered.
I would agree.
Staff have the answers to those questions? That's.
Well, I, I think that's what we're, we're proposing to get to the bottom of this.
And who are we including in staff? Are we looking at Michael? I, I would like to know that. Because I don't want to come back here and, and we go, we're not satisfied with the, uh, the answers that we get.
Well, that's a really good question, Commissioner Hay. Um, what is your thought on that, Vice Mayor, since you requested? Are you thinking utilize our city staff to, to do your fact finding analysis?
Yep.
Or are you thinking third party?
I, I think that staff can bring that forward. I think what you mentioned, hey, let's, let's get the ball rolling and then we'll have the conversation with certain options at the next meeting.
To lay out options? Lay out what they find, the recommendations?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, my, my ultimate hope in this is what I said in the past, is if we could develop policies that are protective in the future to, you know, minimize similar problems, that would be ideal.
Yep.
Okay, did I underst, did we understand your intent?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, everybody. Are there any final comments? Closing thoughts and comments? May I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, oh, all right. Hold on a second.
Just one point. I heard someone say bring back the recommendations at the next meeting. I don't know that that's.
Was that not where?
That was my question.
Yeah, I mean, whenever staff looks at, you know, with the, I, I wasn't here or whatever, but I'm familiar with it like you are. It, it's, it's an undertaking to go back and examine things. Do you want, what do you want at the next meeting? You want a, a plan to review it or do you want some?
Did you say next meeting?
We, we can take our time. We don't have to do the next meeting. So what, what staff, what, what staff thinks is reasonable?
I, I think July 18th would be a reasonable time to come back with at least some kind of work plan or scope of work or to kind of lay out what this is going to look like. Perfect, July, the second meeting in July.
Perfect.
The only meeting in July.
So you said just the scope of work?
Kind of layout, yes, what, what this is going to look like, whether it's going to be in-house staff, whether we have to hire or consult. You know, those are the things that we're going to need to look, to kind of look at. What is it going to take? This, what's the burden to staff and what the topics? We'll, we'll try and lay out where those gaps are as well.
Basic recommendations.
Correct. So we'll bring back something for you guys to review on the 18th, for sure.
All right, thank you. For the love of God, somebody make a motion to adjourn.
So move.
So move, second.
Is there a second? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye, this meeting is adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.